Danny, can you turn your screen on? We're about to go live. Morning, everyone, and hope everybody is well. And I will call the meeting to order. It is nine o'clock. And first item is to do a roll call from the clerk.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Daltonson.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Kennedy is absent with regrets. Counselor McKechnie.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts.
Present.
And Mayor Roberts.
Present.
Perfect.
Hey, everyone is in attendance. The first thing we need to adopt our agenda. So if I could have a mover and a seconder for the agenda. Counselor Wood Roberts and seconded by Counselor Clark. Be resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on June 8th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, that's Carrie. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, item two A. An interest in common as being part of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's been filed with the clerk. Any other declarations? Okay, seeing no further declarations, then we will have the minutes of our last committee, the whole meeting. If I could have a mover and a seconder for those minutes. Counselor Smith and seconded by Counselor McKechnie. Be resolved that the April 13th, 2021 committee of the whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, those carried. And so the first item of business today is we have a delegation from Jan and Patty Loubert or Loubert. I'll ask how to pronounce their name. And we're just going to bring them into the meeting. And Jan, you can turn your screen on. And Patty. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Director of the Hole. So I'm just going to turn it over to you to go through your delegation.
Hey, everybody can hear me? Thumbs up? Then how you doing here? Good morning, Mayor Roberts, councilors and attendees. We are here today representing non-lakefront owners on Wonderland Road. Normally, our counselor Larry Clark would be representing our concerns. But he also resides on Wonderland Road and is understandably excluded from representing us. In order to provide context to our presentation, I will briefly explain how Patty and I feel unnecessary to provide feedback on policy number 32 as it relates to the Wonderland Road Public Shore Road Allowance. In 2013, we purchased a vacant lot on Wonderland Road to build our retirement home because there was nearby public access to Ashago Wigamog Lake. This is noted in our land purchase agreement, which documents access to the lake via shore road allowance. The current license of occupation agreement, LOA, at this public shore allowance location includes a dock marked "private use only", a ramp and moored boats, all owned by the Jax. Every occasion we have tried to access the waterfront, we have been met with shoreline policing and resistance from certain licensee. We have seen this happen with non-lakefront owners and seasonal visitors who have attempted to make use of this public access right of way. So I'd like to share a photo which you might have there in your notes of the access right of way. So this photo was taken from the lake directly in front of the shore road allowance. The lake fine starts at the large rocks at the left over here and extend the bushes that appear behind the pontoon boat. It's quite clear that gaining lake access for swimming or safely launching canoe from the shoreline is not possible without running into foul or repel of the boats. Remember, the dock structures are strictly off limits. We have waited five-plus years for the LOA renewal date to express these concerns. Jeff Als presented these to the council at the June 25th meeting.
May 25th.
Perhaps these comments were too trivial for the council to be concerned about in their heavy agenda for the day because they were quickly glossed over. We are hopeful that we can gain the council's attention today by looking at the broader picture as noted on your agenda notes. First, I would like to review the shortcomings of policy number 32. And second, look at the noncompliance of the Jax LOA to the existing policy 32. Finally, we would like to close with recommendations and solutions. Shortcomings of policy number 32. The first issue in policy 32 is section 2F, which specifically states the council will consider the merits of the specific request for license, including a review of site condition and neighborhood. A site visit is a requirement for issuing and renewing a license in public lands. When was council last? When has council last made a site visit? Council would have seen firsthand the current limited shoreline space available and noted changes in the neighborhood since 1977, certainly since 2010 to the present day. That is why site reviews are in the policy, to consider current conditions. This brings us to the second. Section 2F requires the applicant to provide comments from adjacent neighbors. This has never happened. These comments are critical to ensure the public can present and discuss the use of their public land before council makes use of their much quoted sole discretion appearing in many clauses of policy number 32. Now is the time in 2021 as policy 32 undergoes a review for council to finally address concerns of non-lakefront neighbors. Noncompliance of the Jax LOA. We request that this jack might be revisited due to noncompliance with the bylaw which governs it.
Yeah. I don't mean to interrupt you, but there is some background noise. I'm wondering, Patty, if you could mute while Jan's speaking.
Okay.
Same room, and I think we're getting some feedback. Sorry, continue.
Thank you, Andrea. Section 2F was historically included to recognize the existing use of a dock placed on public land by a long-term resident. Dave Allison, a previous resident in this case, had a dock in use since 1977, at a time when the area was less populated. Section 2F recognized this and permitted continued use of the dock until property changed hands. This is stated in section 2F. The user, Dave Allison at the time, acknowledges that this permission will not be extended to future users, the Jax. Policy 32 specifically terminates existing private use with any new property owner, thus placing the Jax LOA in noncompliance. This noncompliance would not address my counsel for this renewal or for all prior Jack licenses dating back to the purchase of the Allison lot in 2010. How did the Jax do this? Simply by diverting people away from the public right of way and ensuring that they did not canvass comments from existing neighbors, all contrary to policy 32 2F. Councillors are elected as protectors and custodians of public lands, representing the interest and use of these lands for the whole community. This historic LOA, apparently the only historic one in the township, should not be perpetuated when the sole reason for the LOA expired with Dave Allison. As numerous non-waterfront homeowners have moved and continue to move to Wonderland Road, why is their lake access blocked by a single non-lakefront owner who claims a historic unearned right? Issuing of the Jack license is clearly putting the ineligible interest of one taxpayer above the entire neighborhood user community. We request that this public access be returned to free and equal access to all non-lakefront residents, including the Jax. And Patty will close with recommendations and solutions.
Our recommendations and solutions would require either removal of the dock or allow other neighbors to use it without policing and resistance from the Jax. Alternatively, a community dock, as described on May 25th by Counselor McKechnie, pending MNR approval, could be considered. Our preference is to return the public right of way to a natural shoreline without any docks or moored boats. The township would not have to oversee licensing renewals since no LOA can exist at this location, no maintenance, no insurance, and no compliance requirements. As noted by Jeff Isles on May 25th, the Jack agreement doesn't necessarily comply with policy number 32 and can be terminated within 60 days' notice. We believe that six months' notice would allow the Jax to relocate their boats to a marina and remove all land and water structures. In conclusion, it is our hope that in reviewing policy 32, necessary revisions will be made to reflect fairness and equity for all. Public interest must come before individual privileges. Thank you.
Okay, and does that concludes your recommendations and your presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay, just to confirm. So I don't know if our Director of Planning wants to comment first or I'll open it up to questions from fellow councilors.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it'd be best if you open up for questions. I do apologize, I kind of missed the middle portion of that presentation due to technical difficulties. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has for me.
Okay, so open up to the floor for questions, comments from fellow councilors. The Counselor Smith?
Thank you. So, Mr. Loubert, I think I heard, I just wanted to confirm this. You've tried to use that dock or you've been precluded from using the dock that's there. It's labeled "private", and therefore you're unable to access the lake from the road allowance. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Well, I believe, so because the license of occupation is on the dock, what the key is, can they still get down to waterfront? And in our written comments back to the Jax, we certainly made sure that there are, it was right in the policy, that they couldn't have encroachments so that canews and chairs and deck boxes and things that people can still get down to the waterfront to access the water. So in your presentation, Jan and Patty, there was the one picture from the lake facing back to land. But we also had a few pictures in our council meeting that were taken from the land looking back out where we could see the encroachments. And so we want to make sure that those encroachments have been removed. And that's not, I suppose, a bylaw enforcement. And to ensure that the public, particularly the people that can walk there, there is no parking available on that road. So you'd have to be able to walk there, could still walk down through that open road allowance and access the lake. So is that the case today? I have not been there.
Well, the deck boxes and other chairs that are on the shoreline and on the dock itself are not the items that are precluding you from entering the water. It's the width of the boats taking up the shoreline. So there's a little sliver of land on the left-hand side. There's big rocks, as you saw on the photo, that you cannot enter the lake there. So you left the small sliver of land to the left where you're in muddy water and you have to be able to launch yourself into a deeper water and you're coming up against the pontoon boat.
Yes. So Patty, you're mute, so you might want to just unmute.
I have tried to swim there and it's very difficult. It's very narrow. I can, you know, and I'm not a big person. I can barely get in there and it's very muddy. Like, I've gone in there in July and it's very difficult to get in there. That's all I can say.
Okay, so today what we're going to do is receive your delegation. And the questions were just, if there was questions about you specifically, you've made some recommendations. Next on our agenda is to discuss policy 32 in general. But in this case, and I'm wondering, is in, I can't remember exact details of policy 32. We permit the dock where they can put a boat. Is there any way we can limit the number of boats? I see a fairly simple solution, which would be to permit them to have one boat. Having two boats is blocking access sort of on both sides where if there was just one boat there and they may enjoy owning two boats, but the other one could be launched at a public boat launch or a marina on the water. So is that possible that we could limit them to permit one boat on that?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I believe council can put whatever conditions they deem appropriate on any license. I did have a question for Mr. and Mrs. Loubert. Because when I sent that picture to the Jax, they notified me that that was from a few years ago and that they sold that one boat a couple of years ago. Do they still have boats on both sides of the dock?
We, well, I know that they have a pontoon boat, but I haven't. This year, it's early in the season, so I don't know if they put down, put in all their equipment, all their boats. I don't know.
Okay.
So that's something we can follow up on. Now, we did sign it last week with the understanding that we still have the right to cancel in 60 days if we so deemed. But you're suggesting six months. But this is a very, very unique situation on. We don't have another situation like this where there's an open road allowance and this is permitted. And so whatever the council of the past did where they transferred it from Allison to Jack, that happened. And so it can never be transferred again. It doesn't matter if the Jax sell to their own children. It's only to those named parties. So the dock will not be there in perpetuity for sure. But I think we can investigate the, and I'll check with Jeff if we can permit them to only have one boat on the, as you're facing the left side. So that would be, that would, where the pontoon boat is currently in your picture, if that pontoon boat was on the other side of the dock, there would be much easier access to for swimming and also launching a canoe or kayak or paddleboard or something like that for the day.
When we, if I could just say, when we did meet with the Jax pre-COVID about the situation, we suggested that the pontoon boat is taking up a lot of space. If it were on the other side, that would be better. And they refused to do that because on the other side, they say the draft on the pontoon boat runs into rocks. So they have to position both boats the way they have them, which really doesn't help anybody.
Okay.
The area where the rocks are, that's, you couldn't get into the water there anyways. Looking at the dock from the lake, the right-hand side is the only access area and that's where the pontoon boat is. And they say they can't switch it to the other side.
Okay.
That's the situation.
Well, thank you very much for your delegation today. Oh, Counselor McKechnie had a further question.
Yeah, just wondering if there's any chance that you, your wife or Patty said something about a common dock. Would you or any of your neighbors be interested in something like that? And say you wanted to have a tin boat or a paddleboat or something else where you, there's, how many, how many people are involved in this? Have access to this?
If I could answer, if I could answer that. The only access that has been requested is to go swimming, perhaps put a deck chair on the shoreline when you're swimming, and launching a canoe. No motorized vehicle, no motorized boats are required. There's no need for a dock, just simply entry into the lake. And at this time, I would prefer it would be just be with canoes and kayaks and they would be removed when becoming off the lake. They would not stay on the property, they would not stay on the shore allowance. Thank you.
Like, I'm surely not trying to argue with you, sir. But I'm just saying there might be other people that maybe they want to have access. If there was a bigger dock, there are common dock where you, and all the boats had to be on one side. And I'm just trying to see how there's any way we can compromise here. Where somehow it definitely is a, not a friendly situation in the neighborhood. And I sure would like to see it, some type of form of compromise happen. Thank you very much.
Yes, to Counselor McKechnie's point, the, actually, that goes against what policy 32 is going to say is that we don't have any docks there. It's more what the Louberts are actually suggesting is that there be no docks there, not even shared dock. So I think unless Jeff, there was something further, next item on the agenda is to discuss policy 32. So I think we do have a resolution to receive your delegation. So if I could have a mover and a, oh, Jeff, do you want to speak to that before we move on?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify one point because the committee was asking about conditions to limit the encroachment to one boat and the boat may be on one side of the dock. I just want to clarify that this license has been renewed for five more years. So the method to do that would have to be waiting five years or canceling that license and forcing a renewal. So I just wanted to make the committee aware of that.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, and I assumed that too, if there was any other conditions on there. So, excuse me, mover, seconder to receive the delegation. Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Smith. It resulted, the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the delegation from Jan and Patty Loubert regarding license of occupation agreements in Dyserd at all. All in favor? Okay, that's Carrie, and thank you very much for your time in attending our meeting. I don't know if there's a way for you to, on attendance, still view any conversation that we're going to have. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, take care. Thank you, bye-bye. So that does bring us directly to discuss policy 32. And Jeff is remaining in the meeting. So Jeff?
Yes, thank you. As you know, at the council meeting in April, council directed staff to update policy 32 to include public consultation requirements. I was hoping we could have a bit of a discussion today, just so that I had clear direction how to proceed. As per the report, I agree, public consultation is a good idea. I, but only in certain circumstances, I should say. For example, like the previous situation where public water access is impacted or removed. I question whether public consultation is necessary in all situations. Is this would increase the time and cost to process these applications? Where for minor licenses, it might not be necessary. Having said that, based on the conversations we've been having, my understanding is that council is requesting public consultation be required in situations where public water access points are being impacted or removed. The report outlines two sections of the policy that I think public consultation is necessary. Section 2E of the policy states that the municipality will not generally permit docks on road allowances leading to water. So while this section does not recommend docks be permitted on public road allowances, if council were to go against that policy, staff agree that public consultation would be a good idea to determine whether other people are currently using this road allowance and just find out what kind of impacts that would have on the neighborhood. The other section of the policy, section 2F, is for the purpose of addressing the location of historic docks. And the applicants are required to provide proof that that dock has existed in that location unchanged since prior to July 11th, 1977. As you mentioned, Mayor, during the last delegation, there is really only one license in the municipality for this situation. It was the one we were just talking about. So it is rare and they do expire with that user. But staff are of the opinion that public consultation in this section could be improved. Right now, it requires the applicant to submit letters from adjacent neighbors. But that could be improved just to ensure that the information provided by the applicant is factual and public interests are protected. So while I'm only recommending public consultation in those two sections, the policy does provide other options. The policy states that decisions are subject to whatever conditions council deems appropriate. Therefore, council can require a public consultation process for any other situation where they deem it appropriate. Based on our discussions this morning, staff request direction how council wishes to address these renewal applications. It's not, renewals are not really specifically identified or addressed in this policy. Is this something that council wants? Do they want public circulations for renewals required? It might be warranted. Having said that, it could also be directed as a condition of renewal, as mentioned, council has that discretion. I should note that we have received comments from Ms. Shelley Hauser, who has, her comments have been attached to the report. She provides detailed comments and policy suggestions. If the Chair would like me to read those comments for the committee, I would be happy to do so as she makes some good points that merit discussion.
Yes, please.
Okay, so bear with me, I'm going to go through these and I have provided some comments of my own. So if you want to have any discussions about each one, just let me know. The first comment notes that the municipality, well, they want to change the policy to say that the municipality is the custodial owner of the unopened road allowances as opposed to saying that the municipality is the owner of the, of certain unopened road allowances. She notes that these are public lands, which the municipality must protect in the interests of the general public. And please, she's requesting that the addition of the word "custodial" be indicated. And I just, I guess I'm asking how you want to proceed. Do you want me to go through them all or do you want to discuss each one?
Well, why don't we just stop right there? Isn't that a bit of a, and even through the clerk, the word "custodial", I mean, it's municipal land, it's municipal land. Is that necessary? Seems a bit redundant to me.
I think it's implied myself. Council is elected to look after public interest and manage public assets. I think it's implied myself. But I do look for the committee's direction on that.
I think it's implied myself, but if there's any one, I don't think the word "custodial" needs to be in there. It seems that that's just my comment. So the clerk, do you think the very fact that it's municipal land, doesn't matter where, if it's Headlake Park or some back country bush properties, where the owner and we're, as an owner, we're automatically responsible for the property.
Yeah, the lands that the public owns, I guess, is the point of the suggestion. It's changed the tone of the policy. So it's up to council whether they would like to make the change. So.
So is, is there, everybody okay to just keep it out and understand that it's implied? Counselor Smith, yes, okay, so I saw nod, so we, we'll just leave as is then.
Okay, thank you. The second comment, and she notes that at the sole discretion, so decisions are to be made, but at the sole discretion of council. And she is of the opinion that that needs to be replaced. Council is not a dictatorship. They are custodians and protectors of public lands for the best preservation and public use. A such public consultation is necessary prior to any changes in the use of these lands. Please request replacement of all sections where it says at the sole discretion of council. With after public consultation with the neighborhood user community, council will consider slash permit use of. So what she's suggesting is instead of at the sole discretion of council, it should stay after public consultation. And that council should consider or permit use of a license of a that council should consider or permit use of a, a license of a, a road allowance.
So further to your comments at the beginning of this, uh, you said there may be circumstances where it could be necessary or could be beneficial, let's say, not necessary, but beneficial to have comments, but not every time, uh, public consultation in some circumstances. And I do agree with that. Um, and I have a little concern with the word neighborhood because, um, there are other people that live on that road and some people don't mind walking two kilometers to access a public area. What's neighborhood? I mean, I wouldn't have a distance, just as we do with other planning, you know, within a hundred and twenty meter radius or something. I think we need to limit it to, because the word neighborhood could be misunderstood and how did they get notification and I didn't get notification? I, I like to walk that area too or something. So I think how could we word it that the public consultation in some circumstances?
Well, I think we could, it depends on the section of the policy where we want public consultation included. So as per my report, um, I am recommending it in two sections, the sections that relate to where, uh, water access points is impacting, uh, um, the public use. So there's section two E, um, and two F. Two E doesn't, it discourages the um, council from permitting use or permitting a license on a road allowance. Um, but if the council were to go against that and permit use of a road allowance, I think public consultation would be necessary. And again, in two F, it, right now it says that users to provide comments from adjacent neighbors. I think that could be beefed up. I did do some general circulation distances using, uh, the previous, uh, license as a, an example. If we were to circulate one hundred meters, it encompasses approximately three properties in each direction. If we were to do two hundred and fifty meters, it would do about eight properties in, in each direction. So there's some distance uh, examples for the committee. Uh, I'm not sure. I think the best way would be to, if council or agrees to include this, would be to have the wording to, to say that neighboring property owners within a certain distance be circulated to determine public interest.
Okay, so comments on that, including it an item two E and F, uh, and putting a distance as opposed to just the word neighbors. Or say neighbors within a distance of. And I'm inclined to go with the higher, the two hundred and fifty, because a hundred meters on, um, road allowances when some lots, even on back road, back lots or whatever you want to call them, may have two hundred feet of rope in front edge. It may, in some circumstances, it might only include two neighbors. So I, I think the, the larger increase, the larger catchment area. So what do people, Counselor Smith, I think you had a hand, and then Counselor Clark.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing about distances because, uh, uh, we've had situations where because of lot size, it's only the people that are directly next door that they get notified and that's, that's not broad enough. So if it's, uh, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty meters, I think that's, uh, more appropriate. I was also gonna say that, uh, you know, I, I don't have the same reaction in terms of the dictatorship when we say at the sole discretion of council. Council is elected by our, uh, public to make decisions, uh, on behalf of that public. And, uh, big believer in public consultation. We gotta hear from people through a, a public hearing process. But in the end, it's not the people, the three people or whatever number show up and make a presentation that have to decide, it's council that has to decide. And we need to be, uh, ruled by not only what the three people that showed up in a public consultation had to say, but there are other, uh, factors across the, uh, the broader Dyserd at all. Uh, there may be precedents, uh, that we need to consider and so forth. And in the end, council's gonna make the decision. Uh, and, and so that concept of sole discretion is not unique to policy thirty-two. It's not even unique to our community. It's a, uh, a concept that's used in all sorts of, uh, of contract language where, yeah, I'm gonna, uh, ask you at what, some point what you'd like. But in the end, I'm gonna decide, uh, you know, it's, it's my organization, uh, that, uh, you know, owns this particular property. And, uh, and, and ultimately, we're, we're gonna make the decision. But yes, we'll have public consultation. Uh, but the public doesn't make the decision, council does. Same way the municipality owns the land. You know, um, it's not belonging to just the people in the neighborhood, it belongs to our entire municipality. I think we need to, uh, you know, remind ourselves of the roles and responsibilities that we have in that regard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Any further comment before we move on? I think, uh, we, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark, you did have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, yes, it's just that each of these properties is fairly unique and, and the two fifty may be a starting point and something to the effect that, in, in, uh, some form of review and, and situations where there's a broader um, area of impact or, or interest. Uh, for example, on, on Wonderland, here we've got a, a stretch of, I think, one and a half kilometers of backlots of people who would walk down and use that. Um, so just letting people know within a two, you know, within a two hundred, you know, meter radius doesn't exactly catch everybody who would, who would be interested in walking down and having a swim on a, on a hot summer afternoon. But each one's, each one's unique, so you've got to have a, uh, some flexibility to properly identify, um, proper governance or, or, or proper consideration of the municipality, of the residents of the municipality. Thanks.
Okay, so, so moving forward, is there general consensus for, I, I, I for two hundred and fifty meters notification? I think it's a good, as John, I guess, or Smith said, it's, it's certainly a good start. We start going out farther from that, uh. It's a good catchment. It's a, it's a good compromise. Counselor Smith, just so we can.
I just, uh, uh, to, uh, to follow up to Counselor Clark, I, I mean, obviously each situation is unique. But there's also an onus that falls upon people in the area, be aware what's going on. So if we provided a notice two hundred and fifty meters, that's gonna be, that's gonna generally catch more than two properties. And, uh, um, when those people, and let's say it's half a dozen properties that get notified based on two hundred and fifty meters, well, those half a dozen people talk to others, they know their neighborhood. And they're gonna say, yeah, in this particular street, people do walk further. I'm gonna go up the road and knock on a couple of doors and, uh, see if those people will support whatever message that, uh, you know, our six immediate neighbors are gonna, uh, wanna bring together. So, um, you know, we cannot define it, uh, for each situation. Two hundred and fifty meters, I think, uh, will notify many property owners, at least a, a handful or more. And it'll be on them to, if there's a, an interest there, to, uh, to step up and get engaged.
Yep, I, I, I agree. Okay, so we'll move on. Jeff, go ahead.
Um, and I did speak with Ms. Hauser about, uh, comment number three, so I'm gonna skip it. There was some, uh, some confusion about, uh, what that section two A, uh, referred to, so she's asked me that, just to remove that comment. Uh, moving on to comment number four, um, she notes that in sections two A, B, and C, the clause deemed appropriate must take public interest and comment into considerations. These clauses also include at the sole discretion of, which covers off the need for public consultation. So, so I think we've already addressed, uh, at the sole discretion of, um, again, that's, uh, the final decision is councils to make. Um, so they're questioning the, the word deemed appropriate. And if I could comment, I, I don't think anything's suggesting that council not take public interest in comments into consideration. Again, council is supposed to, to make an informed decision based on all the information provided. So where they deem it appropriate, I, I think it, uh, I think it's important that you do take all, all that information into consideration.
Okay, so we'll move on?
Uh, comment number five, um, so the next, uh, the next series of comments relates to section two F of the policy. And that's the section of the policy that, that recognizes the location of historic docks that have been in that location unchanged since nineteen seventy-seven. Um, so comment five A, um, she notes that, that there should be no private use of public right-of-way at lake access points. There are few and often Dyserd Township license of occupations effectively give select private use to individuals on public access lands. Permitting special privileges and space allocation for private use excludes, uh, equality and fairness for all. Individual interests cannot be placed before public interests. It is council's job to protect fairness and equality for all, not create divisions.
I, seeing as the a lot of the comments do refer to the, the, the one license of occupation that we just had the delegation on, not allowed to talk about that anymore. But the fact that that is the only place that we have that and we just got talking about that, that we wouldn't uh, do that again because it goes against the policy. So I'm not sure that all of number five, I appreciate the taking the time and read all the comments, but, um, I feel they're more or less already included. So I, I don't know if there's anything that we would change in our policy at this point. Is there any comments on anything in number five? That anyone wants to bring up? Otherwise, I appreciate, you know, saying that and, and that's why our policy says what it says. And that's why this, that particular renewal is will, anyway. Be careful what I say because we do have Counselor Clark back in the room. So is there any further comment on section five? Counselor Clark?
I, I would just, I would let Jeff take this away and, and, you know, redraft based on considerations and bring it back for council to take a look at in our, uh, our, uh, regular council meeting at the end of the month. Um, you know, this, it, it's gonna, it's gonna need some, some, some rewording to modernize this and to put it in context of a, of, you know, broader public interest.
Well, without direction specifically, Jeff will leave it as it is, except the public consultation portion, Jeff.
That's, that's not the intent of leaving it where it is. It, it does need really work. And, and, and the, the idea is Jeff, we, we talked about this in April and Jeff's, uh, had undertaken to take a look at, at the, uh, at the policy identified where there are shortcomings or where council is being exposed to, uh, um, criticism. Um, I, you know, so, you know, it's, Jeff's our word master on these things. It should be, I, I think, you know, give him a chance to, to properly, uh, look at redrafting based on, on, you know, the longer term interests of a broader policy.
Okay, Mallory, before Jeff, Mallory?
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to say that Jeff does have a suggested resolution here where he, he changes two E and two F.
Yes.
That, that would be, and council has come around on about two hundred and fifty meters, uh, for, uh, notification, but Jeff might need more instruction, so I'll let him go.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, and I was just gonna say, I think the policy is a good policy. Um, it's not perfect and it can certainly use some improvements in areas uh, specifically, uh, in those two sections with regards to public consultation. Um, because, because those public access points are, are there for the public. So, so council should be aware that, uh, anytime they're permitting a license, um, that they could be taking away the right of the general public to use those access points. Having said that, for the most part, we only have one dock, um, that's recognized under section two F. Um, I know Ms. Hauser provides comments with regards to, uh, that, um, they not be transferable. And it, and it's not a transferable license. So when they move or no longer need it, um, that license will die, um, or expire, I should say. Um, there was a couple of the comments I just wanted, or one other thing I, and it was discussed by Counselor Smith last meeting with regards to the costs. I did take a look at some of the, the local marinas, um, for their annual slip, uh, rental fees. Um, they, they range anywhere between about seven hundred and fifty and I think it was eleven hundred eighty-five dollars for the season. Um, some of those were outside the municipality of Dyserd. I think some of, more of the local ones were between about seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred and fifty. So that's just something for council to consider next time, um, they're reviewing, uh, a license of occupation. Because I know Ms. Hauser mentioned that in her, uh, in her comments. But I can certainly take back, uh, the comments I've received today, bring forward a draft bylaw to the next committee meeting and, uh, we can review it and you can provide any direction based on that.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. That would be, that appropriate add. Tamara first, then Counselor Smith.
I'm just wondering on the public consultation portion, if it wouldn't be possible to maybe say direct consultation within two hundred and fifty meters and then general public consultation through a notice on our website or something? Because to Jeff's point, if you're on a lake and you know there's only one access point where it's good water to get in to launch a canoe or something, you might be across the lake, so you're not within that two hundred and fifty meters. But you know it's somewhere you can even paddle across to get to. So I don't know if that's a compromise that could be, I know there's not a lot of them, but.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, comment to that or?
That is a very good point, uh, Tamara. And based on, uh, similar applications, uh, Building Code Planning Act, um, what I recommend is that we put in wording that we circulate neighbors within a certain distance, but also post a sign right at the, the base of that subject road allowance. So that anybody that's going to use it sees that there's some sort of proposal, um, being made to council for a license and they can see right there on the spot that there's something happening and then they back and direct them to, to who to call. Um, the one other thing I, I should mention is that the proposed amendments do include potential financial considerations. So anytime we get into public circulations, might be minor, there are gonna be mailing costs, staff costs to, to prepare and go and install a sign and stuff like that. So staff will review those and see what those potential costs but might be. But in, in those areas where, uh, public, uh, consultation is required, there might be a, a small deposit required by the applicants that, that staff might recommend.
I, I, so two points. One, I totally agree with Tamara and, because I was thinking anyway, anybody from the public can comment on public lands at any time. So, but how do we get that notification out? So using the word direct, direct, um, circulation, which means that a, a letter gets sent in the Canada Post mail, that's direct. But then also posting on our website and posting on site like we do with some other, uh, planning things. I think, would everybody agree with that? It's the direct consultation with the neighbors of, within a two hundred and fifty meter radius and then as well the circulation. Um, and I think there is, there was an appetite certainly in our last meeting to look at fees. Fees not only for, um, the, the use of the license of occupation, but also uh, any fees that are additional for this direct consultation should be borne by the applicant of the person holding the license. So, so when you bring that all back at the end of June, we, we comment then. Uh, but not necessarily on the actual fees for the dock, but certainly for the fees of the circulation. Tamara?
Uh, we had, part of the recommendation was to bring back to a future committee meeting so that there was more time for discussion because it's gonna be in another draft form probably. Um, we don't have another meeting, committee meeting till August. Is that timeline okay for everybody? It's like this one's already been passed, so I'm not sure it's urgent.
Yes, I think that's fine and I apologize, it does say to bring a draft bylaw back to the committee, the whole, so we can have further discussion. The whole point of committee, the whole of these where we're doing the more chat chat comes to council, pass it. Okay. So it'll come to the August committee, the whole meeting. Okay, so I do have a resolution on that. Thank you, Jeff, and everyone, uh, by. I hand, anyone? Counselor Smith, second advice? Second, or please, Counselor McKechnie? It resolved that the report pertained to policy thirty-two, a policy to govern the use of unopened municipal road allowances being received. And for the committee, the whole direct staff to bring a draft bylaw back to the committee, the whole, to update policy number thirty-two to incorporate requirements for public consultation in section two E and F. All in favor? Okay, great, Carrie. So one more thing in planning?
Yes, thank you. Um, and the committee's seen a similar request to this before. Uh, Mr. Bailey appears to be in the process of purchasing the subject lands on Halbeum Crescent for the purpose of constructing a single-family dwelling. In discussions with staff, uh, he was advised that, uh, the M and R mapping data showed a water body on the lands and that a minimum water setback applied. So Mr. Bailey is requesting that council determine that the water, um, course crossing the front of the property be determined as a humid-made drainage or irrigation channel and therefore the water setback would not apply. Uh, staff did attend the site, um, and while staff are not qualified to make that assessment on the water course status and, and obviously defer that to qualified professionals, visually it appears that the water course has been diverted along the road in a ditch-like manner, uh, for the purpose of the subdivision development. But it is unclear if that, uh, is a human-made drainage, uh, ditch or irrigation But it is unclear if that is a human-made drainage ditch or irrigation channel, or if it is a diverted water body. Staff are not able to make that a clear assessment. If the committee chooses to support the request, I have provided a resolution that may be appropriate and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have on this matter.
Okay, so all, what did we, we just had a property in the same neighborhood come forward at the last council meeting. The lands of Brian and Kennedy. And sorry, Jeff, what was our resolution on that? Did we give you?
Yeah, and council did basically, it council made a previous decision on that same water body too and determined that was, was a ditch and therefore the water setback did not apply. Council also directed staff to contact the M and R to see if they could update their mapping in that area. And as per our report, the GIS technician and myself have met with the, the M and R's mapping unit. And they were pretty receptive to the idea, given that it was not a very large area to do. So we did provide them to, I guess, two areas of priority. We asked that the based on council direction, that they at least do the immediate vicinity to prevent this happening in the future. But also kind of requested that if, if they could to do the entire Alberton Village urban policy area so that any development in, in the village wouldn't run into this in the future. So they were receptive to that, but the timing is about three to six months away.
Right. So in the meantime, this will be the third property in the same neighborhood that we're having the same issues. So it would be very unusual to do a different decision, but I'll go open it up to the floor. There's councillor Clark has his hand up first.
Through you, Madam Mayor, Jeff. But the sounds of it, M and R is going to be some time before they get their mapping correct. In the meantime, we want to be able to move forward with some of these applications and it's not fair to ask people to wait until M and R does their thing. Would, do you think they would be receptive to providing a, you know, a letter of intent that they reviewed it, that their official updates will be forthcoming, but that they see no, no issue? Would they provide such a, a letter, do you think? Just so we've got something on our files to protect us, that's all.
Thank you, councillor Clark. It's a good question. In my previous dealings with the M and R, they've been very helpful, but their timeframes are similar to the municipalities. They're very busy. Without them doing an onsite assessment, I can't see them providing anything in writing. So it's unlikely that we would receive anything from them in short timeframe to help a specific or a site-specific development.
Okay, thank you, councillor Smith, then councillor McKecney.
Thanks. You know, we had discussions about this concept of a water body when we were reviewing the reviewing and updating the zoning bylaw. And, and Jeff could probably confirm this, but it seems to me that zoning bylaw offers a number of alternatives in terms of identifying water bodies. And certainly the M and R mapping is is first on the list. But also on the list was an assessment of a qualified environmental consultant. Is that, is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Yeah. So there is a process that's defined in our zoning bylaw. And, and so this party, the person that's trying to buy a piece of property doesn't need to wait for the M and R to update their maps. They have the option, just to say it submitted a letter from Total Site Services to, you know, is in the business of developing properties and building separate systems. You know, it could go to an environmental consultant and someone who's qualified, as Jeff said, he and his team do not have the qualifications. Nobody on this council has the qualification, but they could get a letter. You know, environmental consultant would be happy to come around for a small fee. They'll assess the property and they'll provide a letter that gives us the, you know, the information that our own zoning bylaw prescribes. And it avoids the risk that comes with council making an arbitrary decision, setting a precedent that you know, at some point in the future, we could come to regret because we, we put those zoning bylaws in place for a reason. And they've got certain approaches. And, and as I said, in this case, Jeff has confirmed it. There's a defined approach. Get an assessment from an environmental consultant. Simple as that. Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to councillor McKecney, but I just wanted caution, when, when we do make decisions and especially recent ones, this council last year on McFarland's property, I don't know the lot number, but up Glee Road and just last meeting at the neighboring property. And as well, there's two properties right there that that little thin blue line goes over where there are houses built. There's one right on the water lot number thirty-nine on the plan of subdivision. Called lot thirty-nine, it's not got a number there, but you can see it's one of the lakefront lots. It's got a, of that thin blue line that goes right through. There's a house right in the middle there. So this point to hold up the applicant asking him to get an environmental assessment or a qualified person, when we didn't do that for the McFarlands and we didn't do that for the others. I think it's a great idea to get M and R to do the whole town because it may be other situations like this, but this is a, a plan of subdivision that was done in the late eighties. And the mapping not changed, but.
Then our zoning bylaw should say, you know, based on a precedent set by council or whatever, or the fact that it didn't happen. It doesn't say that. And we just updated that zoning bylaw, you know, three, four months ago. And and I think, you know, I, I mean, I posed the ruling last month where council was being arbitrary. I think it's appropriate to follow our bylaws and avoid you know, creating uncertainty or the, the basis for an appeal. Somebody could go to an, go through an LPAT process over this and say, our council didn't follow its own bylaw. And, and that's my fear that we open the door to that kind of, of lengthy process. Whereas if we follow the bylaw, nobody's got any basis for objecting.
Okay, councillor McKecney, you had your hand?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, I don't know, how long has Halbeam been, you said nineteen eighty?
I think eighty-eight or something like that, eighty-nine?
I mean, there's been a lot of homes built in there. It's always been declared a ditch, a ditch is a ditch. And I don't know why we keep wanting every time there's new home builder, we want to aggravate them with this, this problem. It's not a problem. It, it, it's not a water body. It's, it's been declared already or all those homes wouldn't be in there, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay, so we, we do have a resolution that was included in our package. So you can all read it. It says be resolved. The committee, the whole recommends that council declares the water course to be a human-made drainage or irrigation channel as per section two point one eight two of zoning bylaw. It is not considered a water body, water body and a minimum water setback does not apply. That's the resolution we have. If there's support for that to move in second, we can okay, so moved by councillor McKecney and seconded by councillor Wood Roberts. I've read the resolution. I won't read it again. All in favor? And sorry, I'm needing to look at hands. Councillor Donaldson, can you, are you voting in favor? And any opposed? And I'm voting in favor, so that carries. And the recommendation is still forthcoming from M and R. They'll take their time and Jeff will report back to us when they do that, when we hear back from them. Okay, so goodbye planning. See you later. Move on to fire and I'm not sure if Mike Giles is able to join us today. I know there's been a lot of sirens going off lately. It just seems maybe from where I live, I can hear them all the time. Mike is coming into the meeting to join us. There you go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, I'll turn it over to you to talk about your report and take questions.
Oh yeah, that's kind of the standard typical report. We are getting into June. Business picks up. July and August will be extremely busy. But our call volumes are pretty much on par with last year. The one comment was online training. Some of our, due to COVID now, some of the courses that we used to go to the fire college for are offered online and we have taken advantage of some of those courses. So it's kind of nice to be able to do them at home and sit at home and not do the traveling.
Excellent. Um, so the fire ban was put on this time roughly last week. And there, I just wanted, maybe if you could speak to that, there is some confusion that when a fire ban is on, some people think they can still light fireworks, even though fireworks are not permitted in Dyserd until July first weekend. Can you just speak to what a fire ban really means?
Fire ban means no burning whatsoever. Yes, I get lots of questions. Well, can I still have a campfire? No. Can I have it in a chimney or, or a fire bowl or that sort of thing? That's a no fireworks are definitely a no. So basically any anything, if you've got to light a match to light a fire of any sort, then that's not allowed.
Thank you. We'll be sharing that with the Halbert Lake Village Association tonight at our meeting with councillor McKecney and myself and try to keep that message out. I just saw a lot of chatter on Facebook, but I I suppose when you live and work in this world, you, you think differently. To me, it's pretty simple what a fire ban means. But unfortunately for some people. And it's tinder dry out there and, and it, you know, the hot humid weather, it's just not a good situation. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, two points. One is I guess with the, your short-term rentals are going to be allowed as of as of Friday, and that's going to probably cost more calls for him, Mike. But my, my main call is looking at the stats for, for the month, your medical, you know, your medical assist has doubled. Almost any pattern there at all or anything you're seeing what's driving that?
No, I, the numbers tend to go up and down by month. So I, I try not to look at an individual month. With the exception of the complaint calls, the complaint calls will be tied to fire ban. And I do track that just for curiosity sake, but oh yeah, to me, six or eight months or years is more indicative. We always seem stupid, but you, you tend to get a very odd call and then you'll have two or three of those same calls. So it'll even out over the time, I'm sure. But I also echo your sentiment. I, I think with short-term rentals, I think we will see more complaints probably.
Okay, councillor Smith?
Thanks. And Mike, just for clarification on those complaints. So whether it's a short-term rental or it's the, you know, the owner of a property. If you get a complaint that says there's a, a fire, an outdoor fire at such and such a property and you need to go out there because somebody's reported a fire during a fire ban. Will you share the cost or pass the cost of making that call or visit to the property owner or the renter, short-term renter, whatever it may be that's that has lit an illegal fire?
I review each call individually. I still think education is a very important part of that, but sometimes, yes, it is passed along, especially if it's a repeat offender. But I do not have any hard, fast rule on that. It's it's very challenging, especially in the beginning of a fire ban. Lots of times people just aren't aware, especially the short-term rental. Once I talk to them and explain that they're the ones that are going to pay the bill, then they usually step up and educate their renters a lot better. So most of the enforcement to me is about education.
Okay, thank you for that, Mike, and thanks for your report. And if there's no further questions, I will ask for a move or second or two received. Councillor Clark seconded, councillor McKecney? We resolve that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the fire department report for May twenty twenty-one. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into public works. I think we're still, we have time to get up through all of it, I'm hoping before our first break. And we'll bring in Rob and John and Jeff. Good morning, Rob. And John. Okay, I think we've got everybody. Jeff is just doesn't need to turn the screen on. I think he's not doing that. So we'll start with very first thing, which is a letter from Keaton Thomas or Keaton Thomas from Cypress Road. So Jeff, I mean, Rob, sorry, I'll let you speak to that. We had the letter in our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so this letter is seeking that Cypress Road, which is off of Bitter Lake, Bitter Lake Road, be maintained year round. Currently it is maintained in the summer only. It's not an unusual request. We have had these requests in the past. This council has dealt with one in that area as recently as last year. What makes this one a little more unique is it appears that the Plan four oh four had some financial difficulties during development. What is unclear is from my end, certainly without having looked into this too deeply, is there were some funds paid for by the landowners at the time for the municipality to maintain the road and take it into, into its network. I'm just, I'm not sure on the history of that. I know there was a bit of a clouded path to this development. So what I'm seeking from council today is do we want to pursue this? Do we want to do some more digging on this? Maybe look into the, the subdivision file. Excuse me. And just see if we can kind of connect the dots because as, as mentioned in the letter, we're going back to nineteen seventy-six, wherein the, the financial difficulties kind of happened. And I certainly wasn't here then, so I couldn't tell you what had happened or what hasn't happened. But if in fact municipality made a commitment to maintain the roads year round, you know, I, I think we have some onus to, to take that on without seeing something in writing. I just don't have that, that background or that, that black and white to say yes or no.
Okay, just to refresh your memory, because I was talking to councillor Smith yesterday and I said, oh, there's something in that area. So there, there was a request. It is a little spur rock road off of Cypress Road called
Mansfield.
Mansfield. And that's where we had comment about blasting a rock.
Yes, Mansfield is a wholly private road. It does cross municipal lands, but it is a private road and people use Cypress Road to access it.
It's a spur off Cypress. So anyway, just, I was having just to councillor Smith and we were talking yesterday and I think there was something there. I wish I had a better memory. So the resolution, because staff don't do anything on their own, we get a, a letter from somebody, but staff need direction, whether we're going to follow up. The resolution is to direct staff to return to the next committee meeting with a report detailing resources and funds required to maintain Cypress Road year round. And also we, we do do try to dig into the paper copies of the history of the, of what happened back in nineteen seventy-six. I saw some hands, so I'll take councillor Smith and councillor Clark.
Thank you. I, I think the, the approach of getting the, the research done in terms of the actual background here to either confirm what this letter says or, or find other details associated with the commitments made by the municipality is, is an appropriate first step. And Rob, as part of that, I, I know they mentioned winter maintenance in here, but I think they're also implying what I'll call better summer maintenance. And I know I went over on Friday and, and walked the road again. And I guess on previous occasions when I'd been out there, I'd think, well, this must be a private road because it's not not a road that would be at the, you know, in today's state, at the standard of most of our public roads. Part of that is, is photography. There's a pretty steep hill there. But the road is also very narrow. And so, you know, I don't know if that's possible to address that, be in the area of the hill, if we could broaden the road, widen the road a little bit to actually allow oncoming traffic to kind of meet each other without a collision occurring. You know, it's right now, people are forced to back up. You're coming out and somebody's coming in. Somebody has to back up to the previous driveway and turn in the driveway. And so I'd be And uh, so I'd be interested in uh in getting a little feedback, as I said, also on the on the condition of the road and and what it might take to make it oh, uh, real public road.
Yeah, and that's gonna be the challenge, quite honestly. Um, you know, we can take a look on uh best guess on where it lies within the road allowance, but certainly back in there with the topography, widening a road is very pricey.
Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, I I I agree with Counselor Smith, and we have to do some research on this, Rob, you know, you know, what agreements were made or or undertakings were made back when this was transferred to us. But I'm also well aware of where we've been approached on a number of occasions to assume a private or a seasonal road and bring it up to a certain level. And traditionally, um, I I I think our stance on is is it's up to the uh the property owners of that particular section of the road or whatever to pay the money to bring it up to a standard before the township assumes responsibility for it. Um, because some of these roads could be a million dollars to bring them up to to a standard where and and that's not fair. You know, where we've asked everybody else to to meet a certain um quality or standard. And then let the and then we we step in and and pay the tariff for this gang. So it's not we 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 have to, we have to be consistent in how we look at this, but we also have to see what agreements were made. And you know what's, you know, what what their options are. Thanks.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah, and absolutely, Counselor Clark. Good. Generally, upon these requests, we do put the onus on the landowners or the questers to bring it up to standard. My concern is if uh Dyzart made a commitment years ago to take that road on. Um, you know, i- it wouldn't be fair to put the onus back on the landowner. The onus would be on us, in my opinion.
Okay, Mallory?
I just, I I have a suggested amended resolution, because it did um, and and it looked like Counselor Smith wanted to make another point, so I can read it after that, if that makes sense.
That'd be great. I'll go back to you, because I had some suggestion too, and then Counselor Smith, you go first, and I'll
Yeah, uh, thank you. Just uh, and and I, because I've obviously seen this letter, but I've talked to a number of owners uh over there as a result of walking up and down the road. Um, and and a number of them were there uh in the day. Uh, nineteen seventy five or seventy six, I get to two different years given to me, depending who you talk to. Um, but they actually wrote a check and gave the municipality money. Uh, and and so if that's the case, and I have no way to confirm that, other than that's what people tell you, and that's what I think part of Rob's report will confirm. Oh. Dyzart assumed this as a municipal road, and in return for making that assumption, taking that road on, it took money from people who, all the people in this area that own property. Um, and if that's the case, this isn't like the other ones where it's a private road today. And um, and you know, and and hey, everybody's got a private road, say, hey, municipality, take it over for me. But uh, um, you know, uh, a hundred dollars isn't a lot of money today. It's um um, you know, in terms of roads, it's almost nothing. But if you took that money fifty years ago or forty five years ago, um, it it was a little more then, and when you multiply it by eighty people uh that are on roads in the area, you know, we've had a chunk of money for uh for years, and and you know, these folks are just looking to be treated like anybody else that's on a public road.
Okay, my only comment was, I would highly doubt in nineteen seventy six that we would have offered to provide winter maintenance. We didn't provide winter maintenance in a lot of different areas. Uh, so I I can imagine that we would have done that, but I do think that the onus is on them a little bit to provide us with some of this information. We can only dig so deep and spend so much staff time. Um, they they need to provide us if they're particularly if there's some residents there, obviously, we're dealing through this one person as the contact, so uh, so we'll work with them. Uh, Mallory, you had a suggestion for a amended resolution. Will you read the resolution, and I'll see if there's a mover and a second or four?
Sure, and I I think council still wants to know what resources would be required to bring it up to standard. So I I changed it to be resolved that the committee, the whole direct staff to return to the next committee meeting with a report detailing past agreements that were made to maintain Cypress Road. And for the committee, the whole direct staff to report on the resources and funds required to maintain Cypress Road year round.
Okay, excellent. Mover second or for that? Counselor Smith, and seconded by Counselor Clark. So the resolution has been read. All in favor? Okay, that carries. And keep in mind, maybe the hold is not till August. Gosh, that sounds so far away. Um, okay, we will move on to uh operations. So Jeff, how are things going out there on roads?
They're going pretty good. Busy. We have lots on the go. Uh, staff are doing their regular construction, ditching and stuff, and other parts of the crews are working on summer maintenance, trying to keep the pottles all the signs up and everything else. There seems to be lots of people around, so it's lots going on. The MSO crews have been in town, as probably everybody saw, putting some stuff down some of the streets and making some improvements.
So there were some concerns last week, I believe it was Wednesday or maybe Thursday, on York Street, where the the company shut the road off in the middle of the day when people already parked on York Street. Just to prevent that happening again, is there any way where we know we have rarely have a full road closure. Usually, it's a one lane at a time, so people could still access and and exit. I think we need to be able to communicate that. If that's the intention of a company to actually close a road for a portion of time, um so that could be communicated back to the company.
Yeah, for sure. It's it's hard for them to deal with the weather and stuff, and they don't have exact time for any things.
No, I I just mean, because normally, a lot of stuff is done, they know that it's through traffic. There's a lot of trucks that use that. There's a lot of people that don't want to do the corner at at Highland and Maple, so they end up using that. We, a lot of people use York Street. But it was particularly for the people who had parked there in the morning, went to get out at noon, and they can't leave. So when we do a full road closure, if a company closing a road through through traffic, and even to be, we need notifications, that's all. Otherwise, if they had a single lane, it wouldn't have mattered in place. Yeah. Um, any questions about operations? Uh, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thanks. Um, not a, not a question, uh, um, but you are also on the uh the Canetis Lake Cottage Owners Association call or the spring meeting uh two weeks ago now, week and a half ago. Um, and uh, and Jeff, I just wanted to highlight Rob and Jeff that there was a concern uh expressed there uh by a resident of uh of Eastview uh regarding the condition of uh of that road. Um, and I know that uh Eastview and Harrier were uh roads that um, you know, were entered for uh resurfacing. In the uh, you know, this past winter, when we were going through initial drafts of uh of road schedules and so forth, but uh um, a couple of owners uh raised Eastview in particular, and and uh, you know, when you go see that road, I mean, the the hardtop that's uh was installed twenty years ago is uh pretty seriously crumbled, um, you know, and stretched is um, and uh, and although there's obviously no, we don't know until this fall, what roads will be doing next year in twenty twenty two. I don't know if anything can be done. Um, you know, to restore that, Jeff, I've done some good work on West Shore, matching up some of the areas that uh have broken down, but uh I committed to raise Eastview as a uh, as a question there, and uh, I've done that. So if you can do something with it, I know it'll be appreciated by the owners on that road, and uh, and uh, simple as that, it's, it is in bad shape, but that's fairness.
Yeah, it's 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 beyond my ability to fix right now. It's, it needs reconstruction.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, seeing as we're just on sort of operations, we'll talk about that, we'll keep that in mind. Don't forget that, Counselor Smith, when we talk uh in the fall or September, whenever we, I think, determine that we would talk about um roadworks for twenty twenty two.
Yeah, well, I'll uh, I I will relay that to the owners that uh Jeff looked at it, and and the fact that all of council has heard that road is in terrible shape, and it needs uh to be resurfaced is uh good preparation for the work this fall. Thank you.
Uh, next is Counselor McKechney.
Yeah, just wondering, Jeff, um, dust control, how are you doing with that? Uh, this tryst, spring and summer we're having.
Uh, we're keeping up, actually. Things, the roads are really tightening up. I'm happy. The roads that have been uh had dust addressing on them have gone real, they're not dusty.
Great, thanks very much.
Okay, so one, one thing that I uh I'm gonna bring forward, and it's not a criticism, because it's what council decided, is that when we do the surface treated roads, that we are using a different, and I'm never good with the terminology of what gravel, so pardon me, so uh we're not using clean stone. And we had an issue a couple of years ago on Sunnyside, where we got this flurry of complaints, and we've had it on on Listwood and and Basshawn even. People thought they were getting a gravel road. It's a a stone that will compact into the sort of tar and chip type road. But when it was first put down, it is not a washed stone, or Rob helped me out here. So we're doing some streets in town, and I, it is a council decision that we use that type of product, but I'm wondering when we if we should consider changing that where it's in town, where we have houses much, much closer to the street. So I'll take it away. You got your hand up. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, a- and absolutely. If you want to change the level of service within town, uh, by all means, uh, there will be uh, probably a pretty steep price increase associated with that, but that's something we can look at. Um, one thing I will say is generally when these roads are laid down, we like to wait, excuse me, at least two weeks before we sweep it off, just to let it set up and um, let the stone kind of do its thing, work its way down. Because of the amount of traffic in town, because of the hot weather we've had, we can probably push that up a little bit, so we're probably gonna start sweeping the roads in town, maybe starting tomorrow or Thursday. Um, it's pushed it up that far, so uh for them to lay down there for a week, um, I think there's lots of time for them to set up, so it's gonna get better from here on out.
Yeah, and I and I think it is something, like I say, it's not a criticism to operations, just that it's happening right now, and I did get a complaint, and I and and I do recall, uh, with Park Street, Sunnyside, it's happening, and so where people's houses are only, you know, their front door is twenty feet to the to the roadwork, it does create very dusty environment, whereas when we're doing that type of surface treated road in other areas like on Listwood or or Basshawn, the road, the the houses are not that close. So I think it's something that council should consider. Uh, it does change the level of service, and um, so it's all been decided for this year, but it's just something to, again, keep in the back for my, it's not a criticism per se. Um, brushing, I actually drove up on Percy Lake Road the other day in Johnson Bay Road and had to traverse past the the mechanical brushers, and it does look like a tornado goes through when they're there, because it's pretty heavy duty equipment. But the sightlines are incredible, and I know we're gonna probably get some complaints, but if we can tell people that that's that's mechanical brushing. But in order to keep their roads in good shape, and in order to have safe roads and have the sightlines there, it's it's a good thing, and within three weeks to a month, they won't notice. Uh, but if we don't brush, stuff grows here like crazy, and if we don't brush back, we'll get complaints that they can't see around the road. So we have to be very mindful of that. When people do complain about mechanical brushing, uh, it's a necessity on these cottage roads. So I I thought it looked, I thought it looked great. But that's because I'm looking at it from a different lens. So I went, wow, can you ever see it here? Anyway, compliments to that. And uh, they're working our way up in that area. Counselor McKechney?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a message from uh people on West settlement. It was brushed a few weeks ago, and and I did go and look at it. Um, it it did look a little rough, but like you say, and like Rob says, it's it's the the terrain, I guess, uh, when the machine goes down. Um, sometimes it it it's a little bit more aggressive than probably the average cottage owner wants, but like you say, it's the best thing for safety. But they were very concerned with uh how aggressive it seemed. But uh, again, um, in a month to six weeks, you you probably can't see it, but uh, I must just have sent that message to uh to everybody in regard to West settlement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's nothing else for summer operations? Oh, Counselor Smith, one last thing, yeah.
Thanks, uh, um, maybe not entirely on summer operations, but Rob, uh, a couple of months back, uh um, the committee, the whole had asked you about a uh a possible bylaw with a kind of a road deposit test system uh uh for uh collecting money for people at putting in a driveway or or getting a building permit to uh ensure that we've got a deposit to recover um from if if we need to do ro- road repairs as a result of damage. Um, and uh, that was uh done at the uh April uh committee of the whole. Have you made any progress in terms of uh developing a a bylaw or framework or anything there?
Uh, I have not, Counselor. All I, all I can say is it is on my list. Um, and I'm hoping to get to it, but it's uh, we got a lot of things going on right now, so. Um, and it hasn't fallen off my list, but it it's not at the top.
All right, it's just a, it's a, you know, you see this damage uh occurring so frequently. Um, and while we're spending as much as we are, um, you know, replacing roads and repairing roads, and then uh uh, to be, uh, you know, damage occurring, and oftentimes, it's it's damage that doesn't need to occur if people are more careful, if they unload the equipment in the driveway as opposed to on the side of the road and so forth. Uh, so, um, you know, getting it uh to move up the list would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll need a mover and a seconder to receive this report. Counselor Clark, uh, Counselor McKechney. It resolved that the committee, the whole, receive the summer operations report for information. All in favor? Okay, let's carry. Um, and next is just public work status update.
Uh, yes, sorry, just gonna bring it up. Yeah, so things are really starting to move here. Um, you can see under Capitol Roadwork, there were some roads listed. It has certainly grown since this was this report was done. It's my understanding that the, we have a crew for the rest of this week, and they're gonna complete as many overlays as they can. And then our resurfacing will be done till probably August, when the pulverizer and the grade crew comes in to finish off the rest of them. So we got a really good jump on it this year, so so far, so good. Hopefully, it uh, it it ends as good as it started.
Okay, any questions on any of that? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just uh, uh, to confer, Robin, and that's uh uh, great that there's some early progress here. Obviously, uh, people who uh who think the road's gonna get done this summer are anxious to know when. Um, and uh, and so for the other uh roads, uh um, you know, you're saying the rest of it's gonna be done in August. So like a Nyla Road, for example, uh, in West Guilford, uh uh, you know, uh, up in Kinesis, there's uh, uh, Winkler is uh uh, gonna be resurfaced, uh, boom, part of, half of Boomerang, uh, what about Redken? Uh, what's the status of that uh threat over there?
Uh, I believe Nyla is being done today, Jeff. Uh, you might want to just confirm that. So they're they're on Nyla today. It will be completed today. Um, the other ones further up north, they will wait for the second crew to come in, and last time I talked to them, they were shooting for August. Um, they're gonna line it up with the county work as well, so.
So uh, um, that uh, that end of Redken would be in August also?
Uh, so far, I don't wanna, you know, nail down right to the day. I've been there, done that before. Uh, but yeah, it's looking like August. Um, I can probably, I'll have an update for council. Um, and just let them know kind of where where it stands.
Good, thank you.
Yep, that'd be great. Thanks, Rob. I did see the uh work was done in at the corner York and Highland, the uh, where the stairs had been. The landscaping and the rocks are all put in place, and uh, that looks great. There were still some yellow barriers um there on the sidewalk. I'm not sure if those got picked up or not, but the the landscaping work got done and looks fabulous. Um, and I'm wondering sidewalk work is that, uh, would you know when the section from, you know, wanting, running on the north side of of uh Highland going down to the town lot, you know?
Uh, unknown at this time, but that is one of the items on my list.
Okay, not a problem. But anyway, the the landscaping work was done, looks great. So we do have a a resolution to receive this report. I'll take a mover and a seconder. Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Smith. It resolved that the committee receive an acknowledgements report regarding public work status updates of information. All in favor? Thanks. Okay. The speed bylaw.
Uh, yes, so so this is a follow up from the May twenty fifth meeting of council. Um, so this is the draft speed bylaw for Irish Line Road. Uh, as you can see, there's minimal costs associated with this, uh, probably Uh, as you can see, there's minimal costs associated with this, uh probably maximum three signs, probably two. I have followed up with Agonklin Highlands, just to give them the heads up that we will be passing a bylaw on our section of road, um they do have a small section beyond us. And they've indicated they have no concerns um with us doing what we're doing on our end.
Great. Okay, so would that bylaw come to council in June, uh like in two weeks? Yeah, because it's ready, okay, very good. So any, if no questions, I'll take a mover and a seconder. Counselor Smith, Counselor McKechnie. And be resolved that the committee received the report regarding the draft speed bylaw for Irish Line Road and further that speed bylaw for Irish Line Road be presented to council for approval, all in favor? Okay, Carrie. Right along, more about speed, speed radar sign program update.
Yeah, so this is uh just an update uh for information to council. The uh, you can see on there the number of vehicles that have gone by the speed radar signs, the eighty fifth speed, which is considered the operating speed of the road and then the average speed as well. For these locations, I didn't indicate a baseline operating speed on these, only because in the interest of time, we tried to find locations that were easy to set up without installing posts, um I don't wanna tie up our construction crews at this point. Uh, we will lay out some other locations in the next couple of weeks to uh get it closer to where the traffic counts were taken. So you can get some true, uh some true baseline readings and see if these signs are indeed having an effect on traffic. Um, what I can update is, it's my understanding the county will be doing some resurfacing work within West Guilford beginning tomorrow. So I'm going to redeploy two signs onto Green Lake Road, one for each direction, just to see if we can't get the uh anticipated increased traffic to slow down a little bit going through there.
Okay, well, that's great, and I think that's, you know, something when we said we would do this uh speed radar sign to, you know, having the information, what we then do with it is, is up to us as well, but I appreciate, uh, you know, maybe every month, that being uh a report, if you, if you're able to have that data monthly, just for us to see it's new for us.
It's, yeah, it's, they're, they're really easy to work, that the trick with them is, um if they have a cell signal, we can get the data real time from them. The tricky part is when you go to the remote areas that don't have the cell data, we actually have to travel to the site to get the data off the sign, which is a little time consuming. But hopefully the cell service improves over time and it'll be easier.
Okay, I did see a question from Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh and Rob, uh thanks, I think that's a great to, uh a great judgment on your part, you hit it on Green Lake Road, uh current with the uh, the construction work, bottom end of road, there'll be a more traffic there, and I'd say that not a week goes by that there's not a complaint on Green Lake Road about, uh you know, speeding traffic. I was wondering, uh, uh, do you track the impact of these signs in terms of the degree to which they slow uh traffic, so the uh, you know, the county technology allowed them to oh, measure a car approaching the sign, and then when it started flashing red that you're going too fast, people hit the brake and uh and they're able to say, well, there's slow traffic by twelve kilometers per hour, whatever the average turned out to be, are, are you doing that too?
Not on this one, the, the capability is coming with these signs, it's not there yet, um I mistakenly thought it was there, when I, when I called them when the, that module wouldn't work, uh they said it was coming, it's not there yet. But that's why I wanted to set these up with the uh, the previous traffic count locations. Because to me, when you have the, the counters there, or if you have a, like a stealth radar traffic counter, my concern, or not concern, my observation with these types of signs is whether they're displaying a speed or not, people know they're there. And to some degree, they're going to change what they do. I like watching traffic when they don't know you're watching them, um so they're gonna do what they're gonna do, so that, that's my goal moving forward next year is to get a, a stealth traffic counter and classifier, similar to what we did on our whole network last year. Um, but just have one and pick trouble spots and just see what the traffic's really doing when they don't think they're being watched.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so thank you for that, and uh I do have a resolution, so to receive, so mover, seconder please. Counselor Clark, Counselor Smith. Be resolved that the committee receive and acknowledge this report regarding the twenty twenty one speed radar program as information, all in favor? Counselor Donaldson, you in favor? Thank you. That carries. Um, next is the Dunn Road Rehabilitation uh Service Treatment. So I'm gonna turn that over back over to you, Rob.
Yeah, sure, um so this is follow-up from the end of April's council. Um, so Barbara and I had a discussion on this, and there were indeed some funds remaining from the uh Grace Brothers Canada Infrastructure Contribution Fund uh to the tune of about a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars, uh just north of that, actually. So, looking at Dunn Road, um staff estimated about a hundred and one thousand dollars is needed to bring that up and upgrade it to surface treatment. We did have some money in the budget already this year for regraveling only, um as the brusher was going by, kind of based on conversations we've had about Dunn Road, we had them brush Dunn Road on the way through, um cost us uh probably three thousand dollars. Um, but we didn't want to risk the brushers being out of the area prior to um surface treating that road and having them go back up there for an increased cost. So we do have uh three recommendations for council, um one is to move ahead with the upgrading to surface treatment for Dunn Road in twenty twenty one. If resources allow, um if not, then in twenty twenty two, uh or twenty twenty one, using third party. If council wishes to do that, the, the hundred and one thousand dollars probably will not cover um the upgrading to surface treatment if you use third party. Uh, given that it's the middle of June and contractors are busy already, um I'm sure we'll pay a premium for them to go in there and change some culverts and do some ditching. Um, or of course, number three, as always, uh we can receive as information and, and just do nothing. So we're looking to council to see if they wanna proceed with the work, how they want to complete the work, and uh we can take it from there.
Okay, so as requested, Rob has come back with some information, but there's still sort of a bit of confusion over the Grace Brothers Contribution Fund, and was that specifically allocated strictly for roads in the area? Is, is there ever a resolution of our, or the history of that, Rob?
Uh, yes, it was a contribution in lieu of constructing municipal services, so it was basically a contribution made to the municipality, so they could spend it at their own discretion.
Um, so I'm gonna open it up to the floor for questions or comments, and I saw Counselor Smith first and Counselor McKechnie second.
Um, well, I, I just a follow-up to that comment, Rob, I, I'm also curious about this uh Grace Brothers Infrastructure Fund, you know, is what does that mean, uh services in the area, uh does that just mean done, or does it mean any road in that area, like uh or is it even things other than roads? What all, what all could we use it for?
Uh, I can give a, a bit of background on that, Barbara may wanna hop on as well, um municipal services is very broad. Um, I know some of the money has been used for um expanding the West Bay landfill, so it doesn't have to be strictly roads. Um, it could be roads, it could be bridges, say it could be environmental, um it's at council's discretion, but, and I think it was probably worded that way on purpose just to give council a little more leeway with it.
But it also, your suggestion, then when you mentioned like West Bay landfill, that's a pretty broad catchment area. And um, you know, uh, I'm a big fan of uh, of upgrading roads. Um, and generally very supportive of that, but um wanna be sure that we're upgrading roads uh in terms of consistent with our priorities, if you like. And um, you know, are there other roads that um are in the catchment area that this, this uh fund could service? Uh, that also need to be created, and um, and where would Dunn fit on that list, if you like?
Uh, that I can't answer right now.
Uh, so that's, and that's fair enough, um so Counselor McKechnie, I'll take it over to you.
So is Counselor Smith referring to some road up in Kinesis Lake?
No, no, I, I, well, I'm sure, I'll let you answer, Counselor Smith.
Uh, no, I wasn't uh referring to any road on Kinesis Lake, I was just asking about the roads across the community. Um, council had previously said that it wanted to get roads uh that achieve a certain traffic threshold, one hundred average daily traffic, for example, stored. And uh, and we've only identified a schedule for one of those roads. There are, and those roads are throughout all of Isar, uh including in uh, you know, in this particular area. And so I'm trying to understand why Dunn is uh
Because it's been so long. Because it's been so long, number one reason. And another reason, another reason is, is the uh Ford Irwin, the, the money was designated for infrastructure around the Ford Irwin area. And um, I, I was around a bit, and you were also, Andrea, a, a lot of this went on, so um I, 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 I know that the people uh are, would, would like to see the money spent somewhere in the Ford Irwin area, well Dunn is very, very close to the Ford Irwin area. And uh, it's, it's a road that needs to be resurfaced because of its hills and everything that it has through it. And, and we, and we said that we were going to years ago.
So.
And the, and the money is there, and the only question I ask, Rob, is, uh when you say it's gonna cost more money for a third party, uh how much more would go over the uh, the amount of money, Rob, that uh, is, is there right now in the fund?
Uh, I, I don't know, until we went out for tender or got a quote from somebody, but say again, it's the, we're approaching the second week of June, this is prime time for contractors.
So, so that is back to my, my concern is to, it, it's great that we brought this report back, this came from a notice of motion, this is the way the process is supposed to work. One of the options that I'm going to uh throw on the floor is that Rob, did you wanna say something? Go.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not saying it has to be third party, Counselor McKechnie, um Jeff and I did have a, a conversation on this. And as of today, June eighth, we think we may have the capacity to do it. I just don't wanna be stuck in this position similar to last year, where it's the middle of October and November, and we go, you know, oh, we meant to, but we couldn't get to it.
Okay, well, that's good extra information, the other thing that I was gonna suggest is option three says to just receive the report. Um, I do have concerns with a, a couple of things, one is not spending money in the Halbert Lake area road system, and not spending the hun, the, the money that we have in this area, but does it call, does Dunn qualify under our, what we had just said, uh very recently, which is, it, it did not make the list of roads that were going to get our surface treatment on it because it didn't meet the threshold of the average daily traffic count, so is there better use of this fund? Putting another road construction uh project forward this late in the season is very challenging, so we could receive reports information, not proceed with the rehabilitation and service treatment, or it says repeat, receive information and include it in our road discussion for the twenty twenty two calendar year, because I think there's, like I say, a couple of things happening here, one is that it doesn't, doesn't meet the threshold, so Counselor McKechnie, you say we said we were gonna do it, I, I, there's no documentation, there's maybe it's been a request, I have never told anybody in that area, we are resurfacing Dunn. And so, I'm not sure how that came about, so one option is to hold that thought, know what the construction costs are, and have that in our conversation for the twenty twenty two year, which isn't putting any pressure on any company or our own roads crew who are gonna be really taxed doing what we've already asked them to do for this year, so it's not saying we're never doing it, it's just like, let's have that conversation in September. So, Counselor McKechnie, I know you wanna comment to that.
Yeah, um, fir- first of all, uh, the money's there, and um I, I think that we should uh not uh put it off till twenty two, uh twenty twenty two, but we should, uh if, if Rob can, and Jeff can fit it in, like, like Rob said, with the, with our, with our man, manpower, but uh we'd get it done this year in the fall. If it doesn't, it'll get done in um, in uh ne- next year, in the spring. So uh, that's what, that's my recommendation, um those people, uh I don't think there'd be any anybody would have any concerns about uh that road being resurfaced up in that area. The amount of traffic that goes through there today, people going in, into the new subdivision is unbelievable.
And why are they not taking Hodson Road, which is resurfaced?
Because they, they don't. I don't know, I don't drive the cars, the trucks.
So I just drove that road a couple of days ago, to me, I would, Dunn Road is like a little up and down and hilly and around and around, I, I just, I have concerns because we set a target, we told ourselves, we agreed that here are the roads where the, the traffic count was over one hundred and we have indication that they, the traffic count here is in the uh, what is the number there?
Seventy nine, seventy.
So.
The, the money is, is up there, it's allocated for the Ford Irwin area, so what, what, it's not like this is part of our budget. Money's sitting there.
Yes, and I, and I think we all acknowledge.
And the great brothers put it there for this reason.
They put it there for the whole area, and I think Counselor Smith also said, is it, and it is for that area, but is there a better use of that money in that area? That it's just because.
Well, you, you tell the people on Dunn and the people in the Ford Irwin area that you think there's better use for the money there. Is, is that the answer you want, because I'm gonna be getting emails, I know that, to probably today or tonight uh in, in regard to it, and what, what do you want me to tell them, that the mayor and Counselor Smith think there's better areas to use the money?
I think.
Is that what you want me to tell them?
Well, you can tell them whatever you want, but I think that what we have to do is we set these targets for a reason because there are other areas, there are other roads on that list of gravel, or roads that were surface treated, that were taken back. Um, I'll just think of one off the top of my head, Gardner and Ross Road, so why aren't we resurfacing, and I know we don't have a separate pocket of money for that.
That, that money's not, that some money's not allocated for Ross Road, it's allocated for Ford Irwin area.
So we have three choices on the table, and I believe Counselor McKechnie, you wanna move the first one, which is can you just read the resolution in your package, is that what you're suggesting?
So that's the one that Rob s- suggests, definitely, that's the one I would like to.
Oh, he, he, he doesn't suggest anything, he's staff, he's given us three choices. Number one, so you have to read them, number one says receive report and.
Yeah, I've read it, hello.
Okay, so is that, I'm trying to get a motion on the floor, because we're debating with.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there a seconder for, Mallory, am I doing something?
No, I was just gonna clarify that Counselor McKechnie had said that if, if staff can get to it this year, he would like it to be municipal force.
Yeah, so.
So that's option one.
Option one, so we don't take, so it's reading, that's what I was clarifying, so Counselor McKechnie is moving that committee of the whole recommend to council option one, and I, I'm gonna look for a seconder. Okay, and that's seconded by Counselor, uh I thought, Donaldson, are you seconding that? Counselor Donaldson, that is a second or a question? You don't have your microphone on, so I'm not, okay, I'm gonna assume that they, you're seconding.
I'm seconding, sorry.
Okay, so, option one, so we have the resolution, uh moved by Counselor McKechnie and seconded by Counselor Donaldson, be resolved that the committee of the whole receive the report regarding the Dunn Road Rehabilitation Grace Brothers Canada Incorporated Infrastructure Contribution Fund as information, and further that the committee of the whole recommend that council receive the report as information and proceed with the rehabilitation and surface treating of Dunn Road in twenty twenty one using municipal courses to prepare the road for resurfacing if timing and resources allow, and that the work be funded from the Grace Brothers Canada Incorporated Infrastructure Contribution Fund, all in favor? Okay, that's Carrie.
Uh, just a second.
Oh.
Um, I'm sorry, uh but I got a question, is, if uh, on this matter, uh before you, you said you wanted to get a resolution on the table, I didn't know you were gonna vote right away. Were you gonna get a chance to ask questions?
Well, we were, okay, the floor was open for questions, you had asked questions, I've talked, Counselor McKechnie's talked. Counselor McKechnie was wanting to, there are three options here, and at some point, we had to get an option on the floor. And that option could have been defeated or not supported, and he asked to move option one. So then as soon as he has asked to move, I have to ask for a seconder, and there is debate, we've had.
Well, we haven't had any debate, I mean, as soon as it was seconded, you moved. Well, we haven't had any debate. I mean, as soon as it was seconded, you moved straight to voting on it.
Uh, okay, I felt we did have some debate before. So I will rescind the vote. But we did have a mover and a seconder and now we'll take, continue more debate. And then I will call for a vote because I have to, the resolution's on the floor.
I understand there needs to be a vote, but you know, we have a document before us that has three different alternatives, which we were discussing. And, you know, once somebody selects one of those to put them forward, there ought to be questions related specifically to that particular option. And this is now that we've cut it down to option number one. You know, I have a question related to the use of municipal forces on this. You know, Rob has said he, he thinking he can fit it in. You know, I, I go to, you know, the bottom end of Kinesis Lake Road, Rob, we've talked about this a number of times, three years in a row. You had hoped to get the prep work done on that stretch of road. And three years in a row, you haven't gotten to it. Last year, if I recall correctly, it was because council diverted you from that project. We said that getting it done was a higher priority. And, you know, is Kinesis Lake Road, has that prep work been done now? No, no. So if we add something else to your list now, is there any risk that you won't get Kinesis Lake Road? The ditching and prep work done, culverts and so forth, the bottom end from Patty's Bay down to the dam. If we, if we pass this resolution with option number one here.
Of, of course, there's always risk councillor Smith. The, what we do have going for us this year, which doesn't happen often, is we've had an excellent construction season. When I was speaking with Jeff, some of the roads that are subject for full depth reclamation and ditching don't need to be fully ditched. We can kind of skip along some Dudley Road, for instance. A lot of the culverts have been changed on that. So we don't need to do a full ditching program on that. If we go through Dunn, the timing would have to be such that it could be resurfaced prior to the middle of September. So that still buys, even if that happens and we wait till the middle of September to finish ditching Dunn Road, that still leaves us about a month to continue on to Kinesis Lake Road. So I'm not going to say there's no risk. But for, if we want to push and get Dunn Road done, completed this year, it should be done early enough that we would have time to do Kinesis Lake Road.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Councillor Smith, I, I, my style has always been to, especially when there's choices, especially, is we, I, we move to the next item on an agenda and we have debate. And you were included in that conversation. I actually had proposed option three. I could tell there wasn't support. Councillor McKechnie specifically said he wanted to move option one. So as soon as he does that, I have, I, I'm asking for a seconder because there has been a mover. So we have debate and I, we're going to again, call for the, for the vote. So I read it. I don't feel I need to move it again. It is option one. So all in favor? And if you want a recorded vote? So I see a show of four hands. So that carries. So that, that's the way you go. Roberts rules of order, not me. I don't mean me, Roberts. The other Roberts. Okay, so the last thing under this, and then we're going to take a, a break, is the environment management promotion and education update. And so John Watson, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. This is just a quick update of some recent promotion education activities from the environmental management group. Last week, DICEART received two different awards for our communication efforts. We received a gold print tool award from the Municipal Waste Association for our children's activity book, Let's Protect the Environment Together, which we distributed last fall. The other award category, winners in that category were Duffin County, which won silver, and the city of Barry, which won bronze. So for a small municipality to take gold is quite an achievement. Secondly, DICEAR in partnership with the other local municipalities, the county and the library, won a silver social media award from the Municipal Waste Association for its 2020 Waste Reduction Week in Canada social media campaign. The bronze award went to the city of Toronto and the gold award went to the region of Waterloo. So definitely in good company there in terms of winning an award like that. The second piece is around the mobile app. And the mobile app is kind of soft launched. We will be doing more of a, an official launch in the coming weeks. We're just working in partnership with the other three local municipalities to make sure we've all got our, our ducks in a row. But that's great progress happening there. And then the third piece is that we've engaged a summer student from Fleming College's Sustainable Waste Management Program. So for four weeks in August, they'll be serving as a recycling educator. They're going to rotate between Halliburton and West Guilford Landfills specifically with the purpose of educating residents and ratepayers since they're dropping off their recycling. They also work a bit on some social media stuff, including videos, for example, about backyard composting and digesters.
Well, first off, congratulations. Like, I can't believe they don't have different categories for sides of municipalities. I mean, but I guess we don't need that because we're right in there with the, the like be getting golds and silver awards. Congratulations to you specifically. You did a great job and, and keep it up. So open up to the floor for any comments on any of these items, the mobile app or the recycling educator from Fleming College. Any councillor clerk?
Just, just congratulations, John. That's, I know you've done a lot of work and a lot of investigation on this and it looks like it's really paying off. And it can do nothing but benefit our community and have a better understanding as to how we can kind of manage a lot of the stuff going forward. So thank you very much. That's great.
Yeah. Any other comment? Like even your social media posts are just so fun. Like, you know, just after this weekend, it showed the inside of an empty chip bag. So, you know, it's the weekend, it's hot, it's summer, you're on the dock. We all, hey, I ate chips on the weekend. You know, and so they're fun. Your social media posts are fun. And I think that is key with social media is you have to be, it, it takes a lot of time and energy. That's why people, it's a profession. And if you're even bigger municipality, we have a media communicator, communications person. But it looks like in our municipality, each department is kind of doing their own thing. They do a great job, but particularly in the environment. You have to do those posts either every day, every week. There are certain key times of the day to make those posts too. So, so thank you for keeping things fun and interesting when you're really just talking about garbage. Which everybody doesn't want to think of. Okay, resolution to receive. Councillor Clark, councillor Wood Roberts. We resolved that the committee, the whole received this update report for the information purposes about environmental management promotion and education efforts. All in favor? Okay, that carries. And we're going to take a fifteen minute break. So that will bring us back to eleven fifteen is a nice even number. And so I just ask you to turn your screens off at this time and be back at your computers just a minute before we're in recess. Are we back? Okay, we are back from our recess. And so the meeting is now back in session and the moving along on the agenda, we're going to go to Parks, Recreation and Events section. And we're going to bring in Andrea Mueller. And. Yeah, Jeff, I don't think you need to be on the screen. Are you on for something else? No, okay, bye. We'll bring Andrea Mueller in. So update on the welcome center, Andrea. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing? So the welcome center opened on May twenty first, I guess, for a soft opening. The washrooms were open. So we had two washrooms available for public use. When the washrooms are open, there is a staff member there. Alyssa's in the welcome center now full time. That's where her office space is. And we have hired some casual staff. So we have different staff working. We're still training some as well because we found that originally the thought was to have two casual staff, but we realized very quickly that some of them only want to work one shift a week or two shifts a week. And trying to cover the weekends was a, was our, I guess, is going to be the hardest part. But we have hired a few people who are eager to work some weekends and to welcome visitors. So we're quite excited. We've had really positive comments so far about the washrooms. Mind you, it's a brand new building. So our goal is that at this time next year, we'll still have really positive comments about the washrooms and how clean they are. So I've been explaining to the staff and I know Alyssa has as well, what we're looking for in detail when they go through to do their checks and, and cleaning. And even though the center staff aren't doing the deep cleaning, we still have things that we've pointed out to them that we're hoping they will take care of and make sure that they stay tidy throughout the day. So I know on the weekend they had to open up additional washrooms. It was really busy in the park. Or sorry, not, yeah, on the weekend. It was quite busy down there, probably the busiest it's been since the center has opened. So they did open up additional washrooms just to meet the demand. So that way people didn't have to line up waiting just to use two out of the, out of the six that are there. The interior of the center is closed at the moment. The health units said it needed to remain closed during a stay at home order or a lockdown. There's still some gray area as to where we fall within guidelines. I think we can be treated as a, as a retail space. Our one question or concern is, I know we've discussed this before, at the moment, none of our shelves haven't come in yet for, to hold our materials. Like we have our display rack, but in terms of the boxes of brochures coming in and the cleaning supplies. So some of that we've been piling in the, the universal washroom because at the moment that's not open to the public. If we were to open the doors this weekend, we just don't have anywhere to put that stuff. So we were wondering if we could hold off opening the doors until our shelf arrives, which it's supposed to be in this week. And then also the counter space, like we can have staff outside with the table greeting people, but just if people were to come inside, it doesn't have the greatest impression yet. It just, it's not quite ready, the space. But that's just a question out there.
Well, I think that we should probably wait up until we're ready on the inside. And if staff can go outside, I love the idea of the picnic table. I saw you did some nice planting of some barrel planters to help know that there's no true traffic. That we did put up some curb barriers, but that didn't seem to stop some motorcyclists from going through the curb barriers. So hopefully the planters and the barriers will. Why not open when we're readily ready and ready to open the doors? Like, you know, this isn't a long weekend. We do, we will anticipate visitors in our area and even locals who want to get information. But if that staff is able to go out and it just with, you know, there'll be outdoors.
And they have been going, like some have been going out. If we see somebody hanging out by the door or just like when we're out doing our rotations, there are some people who are looking for specific information. So staff have handed out some maps or heads. We don't have all the information yet either. We're still, it's still trickling in. But we have been able to provide some of that information to people who are looking for it. So.
So without further direction and a date, is it council okay with just saying when staff feel that they're ready to open to the public in terms of the inside space, let them, they don't need to come back to us. You open when you're ready. Yeah, I see. No, it's, but that is fine? Any other questions on the welcome center? I just honestly, for, like I say, from the history of having no bathrooms in the park to plastic outhouses, to the primies that we built to this, it's all very exciting and will keep people in the park. And, you know, by this time next year, when the events are really rolling, which I have a feeling everybody's going to want to be going to concerts and festivals and that kind of thing. It'll, it'll be well used. Have park benches and that kind of thing been put out?
Not yet. There's park benches and the two benches in front of the welcome center get used all the time. Like there's always somebody sitting there. Whether they're having lunch or they're just taking in the view, they're, they're always sitting there. Actually, all the benches, like the park has been busy. You see people on the benches. The picnic tables have not been put there yet, but I, I think that was a gray area that the emergency control group discussed. It wasn't really stated clearly by the province when picnic tables were allowed to go back out. I would think with outdoor dining being allowed to take, start up on Friday, that the picnic table probably could go off again then as well.
Mayor, do you agree with that? The park staff can put out picnic tables for the weekend, Friday?
Yes, I think, I think that's fine now, yeah.
Okay, so even though that is non, so yeah, that, that's great. Okay, so need a mover and a seconder to receive the information report on the welcome center. Councillor Wood Roberts and seconded by councillor Donaldson. We resolved that the committee, the whole receives the Halliburton Welcome Center report as information. All in favor? Councillor Donaldson, are you in favor? You moved it? Yes, thank you. Also to note the plaque that the Rotary Club supply is on the inside. It looks fabulous. So I don't know if that, has that been on social media at all or Rotary Club done that?
I honestly don't know. It was put up at the end of the day on a Friday and I'm not sure if it went on social media or not. If it hasn't, I can take, we can take a picture and put it up.
Yeah, I think that would be great to, and you know, picture of the outside, a picture of the inside. Lastly, just on those park benches, those are two memorial benches. So those, the benches that are outside were paid for by private citizens. And it seems that program has done really well. They're beautiful black wrought iron benches. And you can have it in honor of someone, in memory of someone, or however, and I believe the price is approximately a thousand dollars for a bench. So very generous of the two people who have the benches there. Okay, next we have these banners at the Senataf.
Yes. So it, it, I guess the municipality of DICEART has always had the six large banner poles. So there's three in front of CIBC and there's three in front of the Senataf. And it's our responsibility to purchase the banners to get the designs and put, put them up or hire somebody to put them up for us, I should say. This year, things have shifted and the municipality is taking charge of installing all the banners on Highland Street and removing the snowflakes in cooperation with the BIA though. So the BIA still is responsible for getting the small banners, for people submitting them and for charging accordingly if somebody wants a banner made. Before our large banners, we've done this in the past where we take the same model that's on the smaller banners and blow it up to make a large banner, just so it all is uniform and it kind of speaks to the area that we're in. I, two years ago, the Legion had asked permission to have some banners hung at the Senataf to commemorate there's the war veterans for their seventy fifth anniversary. So that was done. And last year, those banners were placed at the Senataf again. So this spring, when we were tasked with finding replacement banners, it was during that point I contacted, I was directed to contact the Legion to see if they still had their banners and what shape they were in. At the point of contact, they hadn't been able to locate their banners. And they weren't sure on the status of them. So I had gone ahead and ordered six banners to replace ours. And then the week that our banners were delivered, Legion contacted us saying that they had found their banners and they would like to install them at the Senataf. So in the meantime too, I had been directed to let the Legion know that we would be bringing a report forward to council for council to decide or for committee, the whole, and then for council to decide on who, what the banner placement would be and the timing. So there's a few possible options that I'm proposing. And then maybe there can be a discussion as to what we would like to see happen. So one is that we hang the six large banners both in front of the Senataf and CIBC. And then after Thanksgiving weekend, the Legion can pay for somebody to remove our banners, put up their banners and have them up for the month. So that they stay up till just after Remembrance Day. And then when we do the transition to put out the snowflakes, then we would remove their banners and give them back to them. So that's one option. Another option could be that we only take charge of the three in front of the Senataf and the Legion take charge of the three, or sorry, we only take charge of the three in front of the CIBC and the Legion takes the three in front of the Senataf right from the beginning of the season and they're up there from May until the snowflakes go up, which is usually around mid-November. So we hire Sharp Electric to install the banners. And so we. And so we try to do the banner installation and the snowflake removal at the same time, so that way there's not a double expense. We are hoping that next year, I've been talking with the BIA, and we're really hoping that next year we can actually get the banners up in April, so that their snowflakes are down when there's no snow on the ground anymore. This year it was later. But both Angelica and I were put into this position with not knowing that we would be, so we're hoping next year, though, to have a plan in place so that everything is done earlier in the spring, and then it just makes more sense that there's no snowflakes up come April.
Okay, so Andrea's given us sort of two options. One, the Legion just look after all the large banners down at the Senetaph year long? And what's on them, or that the other option is that the, we look after them except for the, basically the month, which is from Thanksgiving weekend till, till, till they come down? So that was the other option. So comments, questions? What do people think? Which option? Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark?
Does Legion think, Andrea Mueller, to you, do you think that the Legion's gonna have banners that they would like to hang every year for the full summer?
That's the impression I've been given. It's been, there's been a lot of back and forth, because at first the Legion was contacting the BIA, and then they were contacting me, and different people have been contacting. There hasn't been really one point of contact, but my impression is that yes, they would like to be in charge of the banners at the Senetaph each year.
Okay. Do you have follow-up, or do you wanna?
Well, just, just a comment. I mean, you know, it's a place of honor for fallen soldiers, and if the Legion you know, believes that they're gonna have appropriate banners that would be there each year, I'd certainly like to give them first priority, if you like, for those three at that place of honor. And if there are some years that decide in advance, it's not, oh, a year that they want to commemorate something other than a month closer to, you know, the October, November, around Remembrance Day, then, you know, they could have that option by the BIA and us in advance, that they're not gonna use them through the summer. And something different, but if they really have an event or you know, something that needs to be commemorated, then I'd give them first access, like, I give.
Okay, so there's one thought, and Counselor Clark, you were next?
Yeah, I think we need an undertaking from the Legion that they would be made, if they want it full-time, like, for their own use. I guess a couple of questions. One is, are they gonna have different banners through the course of summer, and they went around Remembrance Day? Would they take responsibility for making, ensuring that the banners that are up there are well-maintained or not worn, you know, that there's a certain standard that's maintained? So I guess, you know, what we need is a little bit of idea of the game plan and the support that they're willing to put around it for us to consider.
Tamara?
One option that we haven't even discussed internally, I don't think, is, is what about sharing the space? What if we had like, one or two of the Legion, or one or two of Dyserd at that space, and then year-round or something? Would that be something that would work?
Sort of a third option. I suppose it's the putting up and taking down is very costly. Every time, get a bucket truck, just go cha-ching. So no criticism to the company, but we're not, we don't have the ability to do that ourselves. The one thing that I recall that the six large banners that the municipality took on, and they took those on because oh, how many feet are they? Ten-foot banners? They're very expensive. The three tall, the CIBC and at the Senetaph are quite a bit more, so we did choose to order some stock. Some of them were Canadian flags, et cetera. I'm kind of leaning to the first option, which is that the Legion just do it for that month. In a way, to me, that it makes it more special, which is during Remembrance time. It is a place of honor year-round. I do get that, but the consistency of the flags of the six banners that the municipality had ordered, I believe was, was it two Canadian flags, Andrea?
It changes from, like, so we had, when we had the 150th anniversary, we had a Canadian flag, and we had, we had the the 150th flag, the Canadian flag, and the Dyserd 150. Then the following year, it was Susan Hayes artwork that was used, that was also appeared on some of the smaller banners, and this year we've used some of the artwork. So there was artwork submitted to the BIA that was juried, and then Luke gave us some of that artwork, and we chose from that, the banner images that would appear, and then some wording, so it's welcome to Halliburton. Explore Halliburton and enjoy, enjoy, like, just.
Yeah.
So, so those are the messages we went with. We're just trying to make it so that when somebody comes in, they, there is a nice message or a nice greeting. Some years there have been Canadian flags, but the Canadian flag we had, the banners only last for a few years, and then they get worn out very quickly, so it's a two- to three-year maximum life cycle on those banners, it seems.
They take a beating, especially down at Senetaph with the wind there. So, I mean, we purchased six for this year. I'm wondering if we, if we do that this year, it doesn't mean that next year, and because there has been this sort of back-and-forth communication, maybe we could request to the Legion, that, well, tell them that they get the Thanksgiving to, after Remembrance Day, whenever they come down, and that if they want to change that for next year, to please contact you, like, you know, January, February, on a go-forward basis, and do the six banners that the municipality purchased for this year, and let the Legion do that month at the end. Is everyone okay with that for this year? And if Legion wants to change it, maybe they, through you, or a proper letter, or so there isn't some miscommunication. Is that okay, or is there someone wanting the Legion to have the band? Yeah, Walt's nodding, nodding, nodding. Okay, so that is actually what the recommendation is. So then, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
I'm, I'll be okay with that, as long as the Legion is given advanced notice. If they want the thing for 2022, for the entire, you know, spring, summer, and fall, they'll have that opportunity, they just need to speak up. The other thing that I'd highlight here is that, you know, it's, it's not just about the half a dozen banners that, you know, we as municipality put up. The Canadian flags that are hanging from our hydro poles along Maple are often in terrible, terrible condition. It's, you know, it's almost embarrassing, frankly, the condition they're in this spring. And I, and I think we need to ensure that there's some consistency in standards there. That it also sends a message about our community.
Andrea, go ahead.
So those, I had somebody call me with concerns about those flags, and I had asked some more questions. Those are actually, the BIA orders those flags, and so they're responsible for the flags. I don't know if there's some sort of agreement that can maybe be made between the municipality and the BIA, just because I agree, there's, there's quite a few that were tattered and torn, especially after a long winter, so.
Yeah, well, maybe we just make it conditional. If you want to put flags on our, on our hydro poles along the street, that's terrific, we're glad to have it, and they need to come down, you know, by the first of December or whatever, because they don't buy a high enough quality flag. And, and as, you know, as you've had a call, I mean, it's, it's obvious that they're in just disgusting condition. You know, over the course of the winter and entering spring.
Counselor Wood Roberts, can you communicate that back to the BIA as you are the rep? Even though it's not, it doesn't wait for a meeting, if you can, instead of Andrea Mueller, if you can communicate that? Because there was actually something else that it's not on the agenda that I, so I'll talk to you later about it, that I was gonna communicate to the BIA. Tamara?
I was just gonna say, if, if, if council's looking to provide permission to the Legion to have the banners up year-round, if that's the desire of council moving forward, there's still no reason you couldn't do it this year if that's what you want to do, as opposed to having them only up for Thanksgiving. They can get them installed separately anyway. That's not, the cost isn't the big impeding factor there. Andrea does have six in stock, but we could also keep the extra three for when the other ones wear out as well, but I'm just thinking, if, for consistency, there's no point if you're gonna change it next year, you may as well change it now, is all I'm saying in terms of policy, if you want to develop a policy moving forward on it. Do you see anything different with that, Andrea Mueller? Or any issue with that? So it's really down to what do you want as a council? Do you want the, the BIA or the Legion flags at the Senetaph from the whole time they're up, or do you just want them there from September, October period, November, or October, November?
In my mind, there's something, putting them up for that month that makes it special. It's like having Christmas lights on your house year-round. You know, what makes it special is you put up Christmas lights on December 1st. No, some people do them earlier, but you know what I mean? It, it, it's a different memory, but it makes it up those flags for that time period, so you know, that's, that's my thought, but if they, we did have discussion that we would because we had the six flags, we would put them up. Spending a lot of time on this. Counselor Smith, Counselor McKechnie, next?
Well, I, you know, I, I saw your approach of 2021 being ours, because maybe the Legion doesn't have anything yet. And by the time they get something for this year, you know, we'll, could be into August or whatever, and it seems like we'll have, you know, we'll have weeks passing, at least weeks, maybe months, passing with nothing there.
They have the flags.
But, you know, the, the other reality is that if they're doing things to commemorate certain events, you know, use the Battle of Zimmy Ridge, for example, that took place in April, and, and so maybe they don't want to save those things till you know, the fall. That might be appropriate to, you know, depending what event it is that they want to commemorate, having it for the summer might be the right thing.
Speak, Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, I think we should contact the Legion and see if they want to leave them up. I, I'm kind of in favor of them, if the Legion wanted to, to leave them up, because I don't think we remember enough. We just seem to remember on November 11th of what happened, and we have such a great history, and right in our village there, and those people should always be remembered, so I think the Legion should have a say in this, what they'd like to do. Thank you.
That changes from the resolution, so I'm just gonna look to Mallory that if that's. Mayor, do you want to comment?
Yeah, just the, the Legion did provide comment that that is what they want, is to have them year-round. They do have their flags already, they found them in storage. And the BIA has also submitted comments that they would like to see banners that match the downtown banners more general in nature throughout the summertime, and have the Legion ones put up in the fall. So you do have two different sets of inputs that we've gathered for you to consider in that.
Okay.
That's why the one thing I'd suggested was, I don't know if maybe one, maybe we could have a combination, maybe there could be a welcome to Halliburton flag at the Senetaph, but also a couple of Legion ones, maybe, and do it year-round or vice versa.
Okay, looking for some clarification here. We've sort of changed our mind a little bit, the resolution says one thing, if we're changing that, we need to say something else. Okay, Mallory?
So that we had a second option, which is kind of worded generally, and we can see if we want to change it. So it could say, be it resolved, the committee the whole recommends that council grant the Legion permission to hang their banners at the Senetaph from May to November, provided the images and content meet the approval of representatives from council and the BIA. So I don't know if we want to reword that, it kind of just.
Did everyone hear what Mallory said? Is that what we would like? That's what we're going with? Okay, so Mallory, I'm just gonna put its amended in. And I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that, and Andrea Mueller can communicate that, but still, Counselor Wood Roberts is gonna communicate to the BIA about the Canadian flags. Okay, so a mover and a seconder then? Counselor Smith, Counselor Wood Roberts? Do we need to read the resolution again, or is Mallory's reading of that resolution okay? Okay, so all in favor? Okay, so that carries. Are you okay with that, Andrea? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Just let me write something here. Okay, we'll move on to video surveillance.
So you can recall, it was the April Committee of the Whole meeting, I brought a report forward that we would be putting up a survey about video surveillance for the skate park and the Halliburton Welcome Center. That was done. The survey went up in the beginning of May. It's met all the requirements that Mike March needed for the, for video surveillance technology and all the the different levels that he has to report to. We received some responses, not a lot, but we received some responses. Every response we received was in favor of video surveillance in both locations. So what we're looking for now is for Committee the Whole to recommend that council approve the installation of the video camera. So the ones at the Welcome Center have already been installed, they're just not on. There's already signage made that Mike dropped off that says video surveillance is being used. And it references the policy and some different things, so that's already at the Welcome Center, just not on the walls yet. So as soon as council approves the use of the video cameras, he'll turn the switch on and they'll work. They already tested them last two weeks ago to make sure that they were working and gathering the images needed. And then for the skate park, at the, there's a light pole by the skate park, which has already been wired and is ready for a camera, so then it's just a matter of of Mike getting the camera and installing it, and then we can use video surveillance there as well. And the only time the footage is used is if there's an incident that's reported to us, and we need to go back, or the police need to go back and see what it is. Otherwise, otherwise, nobody's sitting there monitoring it. And it's, I think this footage only lasts for seven days before it gets covered up again.
Okay, so we've already talked about the policy. This is just the public consultation. If we wanted to add another location, I'm gonna propose the band show. Do we need to go through the whole process again?
Yes. So we can add additional cameras at the Welcome Center or at the skate park without having to go through the whole process again, but if we put in a new location, then we have to go through it all over again, but now we know what we're doing. We have the survey, it's on, so it's just a matter of changing a bit of the wording and, and starting all over again.
So we have, and we already have the policy, we're not creating the policy, it's just getting that public, we have to do a public consultation, a survey. I just, you know, yeah, I, I would like to see it at the band show, but I think that's just because I know how much hard work went into that, and it's a beautiful structure, and there are people that do think they're, that probably shouldn't be, because it's covered shelter, so, and there's been some damage done to some of the screens, and they're very expensive that are there, so that's for another day. If we want to bring that forward, we, I'll bring that forward another time, but for now, we just have this on the skateboard park and the Welcome Center, okay? So I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts? Be it resolved that the committee the whole recommends that council approve the use of video surveillance cameras at the Halliburton Welcome Center and Halliburton Junction Skate Park. All in favor? Okay, I saw Walt's hand. Okay, Carrie. Okay, and lastly, arena fees?
So I have been in contact with, or I've looked at the arena fees for surrounding arenas. I've also been in contact with Craig Bell Fry at Minden Hills to discuss fees, because we were hoping to keep the fees relatively the same between Halliburton and Minden. We don't want ours to be over priced higher than Minden's, or too priced too much higher than Minden's, because that could create some, some we may lose some user groups if our fees aren't somewhere along the same lines. When I had a discussion with him, they were looking at a 3% increase, and that's what we're looking at as well, and I know, like Huntsville, for instance, they show an increase over two years, so when they put their bylaw together, they show the year-one increase and the year-two increase, et cetera. So what I, what we've proposed is a 3% increase on our winter ice rates and the auditorium fees. The summer ice rates were increased a few years ago, just prior to COVID. The, at the time, the winter ice rates were not increased. I have already talked to Highland Storm. Highland Storm is able to manage a 3% increase. They wouldn't be able to manage much more than that. And then if, if directed, I will approach some of our other user groups to, to see if about a 3% increase as well, or to let them know that this is what we're thinking. But if this is approved, we would look at implementing this on Tuesday, September 7th, when we move into the winter, the fall-winter ice schedule, so for the summer. So for the summer, there's no effect, but starting September 7th, there would be.
Okay, questions on ice rental fees? Councilor Clark is good with anything, any thought? They're still low, they're still really, really, really low, just saying. It's not what it costs, it's not, we never, Rose can operate the loss, we're never going to charge what it really costs. That's not what we're trying to do, but we have to close the gap a little bit. So sorry, I was just focusing and making the font bigger. You said Huntsville does it over two years, are we just doing it for this year?
We're proposing this year and then another 3% increase next year to try and close that gap. We had talked about, originally, we had talked, before COVID happened, we were talking about doing a bigger increase and having it take up rollout over five years. Our fear this year is that if we implement it now, for some groups, they they're barely treading water. For instance, like Highland Storm, their registrations have gone down. And then with COVID, they really took a hit. So they might, if if our rates went up drastically, then they might have to fold the organization. So we're trying to be cognizant of that. We do realize that we have to have an increase. Sorry, it's class time. We realize that we have to have an increase, but we're just trying to make it so it is manageable for our user groups. And then potentially, once we all get through this COVID loss or gap, we can look at a higher increase, maybe in another year or two, is the thought.
This comes in on September 1st? Yeah, so yeah, I saw you, I could read your lips. So it is over the sort of the 2020, like two years, a proposed rate increase would be effective September 1st and then the 2022, 23. And any comments, is everyone okay with that? I think Councilor Clark said he was good, is there, Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Thanks, I know it's. I think it's tough to do a dramatic increase at this point in time to be effective September of 2021. You know, as Andrea has noted, you know, it's been a tough time for these hockey leagues and so forth. But I'd be reluctant to set the expectation that the increase is only going to be 3% in September the next year. And maybe it'll need to be more. It was a message, you know, that you noted Highland Storm, their registration is down. You know, the reality is that this arena costs a lot of money. And there's very few people in our community that actually make use of it. And council, when it laid out some strategic objectives, laid out a, an assessment of a, you know, recreation complex. You know, it's a recreation complex that could get located out at a piece of property by the pine stone, for example. But maybe, you know, our future has a recreation complex across the parking lot where the arena is currently located. Maybe there won't always be an arena, but you know, as as Mary has alluded to, we're spending a ton of money. More than half a million dollars is the net cost of that arena. And there are probably, it may be the only facility in town that costs that much money. And when you look at it on a per user basis, because again, registration is down. Most of our community is never inside the hockey arena on the ice surface. And, you know, it's council's responsibility to look at how those dollars get allocated and whether we're putting them in the right place. And and if if the hockey users can only afford a 3% increase year after year, and oh, here, this is 2021, this is the first increase since 2018. So what we're really talking about is an increase of 1% a year. Our costs are going up by more than that. And that's why this facility is costing us over half a million dollars. And and so I'd like to, you know, as I said, I'm okay with limiting the increase to 3% in September 2021 because there's really no time for an organization to react otherwise. It seems to me that as a council, we need to be taking a hard look at these things. And maybe it's later this year and saying, really, are we spending our money in the right place? In the in the area that's most important to the majority of our community as opposed to a small portion that actually utilizes the arena today?
Okay, Councilor McKechnie?
Yeah, to me, that statement, that's just the kiss of death to a community. You get rid of an arena. Young families, this is tough times. No wonder people are, you know, they're not worried about hockey right now. They're worried about putting food on the table. We're going through a really tough time here in this pandemic. Now we're even thinking about closing the arena? I mean, to me, that's outrageous. I definitely would 100% not be in favor of that. I think we should, as a community, and if it takes people like me to get out and then help market and try to get families out to play in hockey again, whether they're boys or girls, men's leagues, ladies leagues, hockey's a great game, Halliburton's got a great history here. And it just breaks my heart to think that some you'd even think about closing our arena. There's not many communities that don't have losses in their arenas. It's part of a service that brings people here. And this, that arena has had a lot of great times. And right now, it's kind of in a bad state. And I think a lot has to do with COVID. And also hockey has gone down a bit in the last few years. But I think with the great hockey players, being here, Bernie and Ron and Matt and Cody and a old guy like me, we could, we could do more to try to promote it, get people out playing again. So like I say, it breaks my heart to even think about closing that arena. Thank you very much.
That's fine, and I, let's just stick to the topic, which is the fees. And you're right, they were talking about this, but the time wasn't right. And so we've got a few years behind. One option is we do the 3% for the 2021, 22 season, but rethink the 2022, 23 season. Only concern I have is we do want to be fairly competitive with Minden. I did make a comment that their ice rates are still low. But, you know, we have what we have and we have to keep it at that right point where we don't break an organization like the Highland Storm that they can, or be so different in a rate from Minden where they also practice and play. So we could just take the proposal and do the increase for the 2021, 22 season and ask Andrea to consult with Minden and look further. But bring bring a report back in like, say, January or February, well in advance for the 2022, 23 season. We don't have to accept that rate, we could just do one increase. Is that okay? Is there anybody, sorry, Mallory, am I saying something wrong? Okay. Had that look on your face and I thought, okay, I mean, it's it's one way to just do the 3% right now, which is what she's proposed. And then ask Andrea to bring back in consultation with our neighboring municipalities and their ice rates. And we may very well just go, okay, it's 3% for 2022, 23, but we don't need to lock that in right now. We could lock that in next year in, say, March. Is everybody okay with that? Just doing one year at a time? Okay. So 3% increase for the 2021, 22 season? And Andrea, further that you bring back a report, put a little thing in your calendar to say ice rental rates. And Minden may just say, yep, we're still doing, this is exactly what we're doing, we might be exactly in the same place. So I do need a mover and a second for that, I'll have to change. Okay, mover by Councilor McKechnie, seconded by Councilor Clark. So I don't think I actually have to change the resolution, Mallory, it's just the same, it's just the direction to change.
No, if we want to amend the fees again, we'll just do another fee bylaw. So this is just to pass this one.
Yep, okay, good. So it says, be it resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council accept the proposed arena fees increase effective Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, and direct staff to advertise the proposed changes to the fee bylaw for public comment. And further, that the committee, the whole recommends that council direct staff to bring the revised fee bylaw to the July 27th, 2021 council meeting for approval.
That's in order to meet notice requirements.
Thank you, okay, all in favor? Okay, and that's passed. And that's everything for you today, Andrea, thanks very much.
Thank you, and if any of you are by the Welcome Center, just knock on the door and Alyssa can give you a tour or myself if I'm there.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next, we have some museum report. I believe we're bringing Kate in.
Okay, hello, how's everyone doing?
We're fine.
So we're, we're getting there, we're getting closer. So the museum will be able to reopen under phase three of the province's reopening plan. But one of the things that's really exciting is that under some of the guidelines for reopening, under phase one and phase two, it means that we'll be able to start using some of our outdoor spaces again. So that's, and coincides perfectly with the good weather. So yes, we're getting there, we're getting closer all the time. And we're just going to carry on as well, providing some, providing online content and pick up and go content as well for people because we know that everyone's comfort level, as things start to open up again, is going to be a little bit different. So to work with everyone, but yes, exciting days ahead, we're getting there.
Great, all right, well, thank you for that. If there's any questions to Kate at the museum or on her report, Councilor Clark? I mute, Councilor Clark?
There we are, okay, thanks. Kate, I think the Sculpture Forest has been open or has been able to stay open? Or, you know, yeah, and you've got a couple of exhibits over around that area. Any way of kind of dovetailing with some of their stuff so that?
Definitely.
Big sawmill over by where the start of that is and you have other opportunities.
Yeah, definitely. And certainly with outdoor gathering sizes that are allowed, getting a bit bit larger and outdoor amenities opening again, yes, that certainly means that in terms of our exterior spaces, yeah, we've got lots of options available now, well, as we get further into stage one of reopening. And yeah, that will, that will mean possibilities for us and also to take some of what we do in our interior spaces outside as well as working with the outside spaces that we have. Because certainly, the Sculpture Forest is a busy place, it was a busy place, well, it's a busy place all the time, but it was a busy place last summer with lots of people exploring it, brand new, looking to explore in their own backyard. And certainly, we're, we're a part of what they're exploring there as well. So yes, definitely, we're just, we're ready to go as quick as we can.
Thank you, Kate, and I'll need a mover in a second to receive a report. Councilor Clark and Councilor Donaldson. Be resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledge receipt of the Halliburton Museum Report, all in favor? Carrie? Kate? Thank you. We'll bring in Carl and I believe Robert, they will be joining us? Yes, okay. Good morning, but I think it's still one minute, more minutes to say good morning. Carl, Robert, hi, and it'll be this afternoon. So yeah, first up is your building permit activity report as of May 31st, 2021.
Yeah, so typical building permit report. They're up from previous years, construction value especially has gone up. That's about it.
Any questions on the building permit report? Councilor Clark?
So Carl, do you think that the increase in value is due to the 40% or 50% increase in longer?
It might have something to do with that. I know that we're seeing a lot of large, like, the projects that are being being built right now are, you know, they're they're very large projects. So that, I mean, it might have a little to do with both those aspects.
The word cottage, just because it's a structure on a lake, is now, there, most people aren't building cottages as what was traditionally known, they're building, you know, large, beautiful, beautiful homes. Okay, so there's no further questions on that, I'll just get a motion to receive, oh, sorry, Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Not a question, but a compliment for Carl. I had occasion to look at the equivalent reports for some of our neighboring municipalities. And I have to say, Carl, that your report finds a long way above what some of the, some of the neighboring councils receive from their chief building official. You've got a comprehensive content here, not only for the current year, grafted out, but, you know, the five-year history really gives us, I think, a better or fuller picture of what's going on and how it compares to past years. So just wanted to acknowledge that, thank you.
Very nice, that's good. You know, I just, I have a question, I wonder, through Barbara, just if Impact's able to keep up with this boom? Because, you know, what's the timeline from when someone gives Carl issues a final certificate or? When does Impact kick in? Is it with occupancy permit or is it with the final inspection? Occupancy, correct?
Occupancy is at one stage, so it depends on how how complete they are. Impact will assess them at a certain stage, but that's when the first one kicks in. If they don't get an occupancy inspection, Impact will go knocking around and seeing what stage they're at within a reasonable time. So people that think that, you know, they're not going to be taxed because they don't get their occupancy inspection, that's not the way it works.
Barbara, did you want to comment on the Impact? Impact?
Yeah, so to Carl's point, Impact will catch up with the property owner. Basically, Impact will engage an assessment once the final occupancy has been provided. However, they also take a look at partial occupancy and evaluate and assess in that regard. And so actually, staff met with our MUNIS or Impact rep. And surprisingly, we learned through that meeting that Dizart is very much a leader in the number of building permits that have been issued in the first quarter of 2021.
That's good news, okay, thanks so much. So I do need just a mover second or two to receive the report. Like, Councilor Clark, I'm seconded by? Councilor Smith? Be resolved that the committee, the whole received the May 2021 permit activity report as information, all in favor? Carrie? Next, we have is the bylaw department, Robert?
Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well in the heat. I know I certainly am having a tough time with it. Just for the bylaw update for April and May, pretty straightforward information. I do want to note, under the medical center gate, recently, June 1st, we actually had an issue where somebody decided that they wanted to break the gate. And from what I've been told, everybody cheered about it, that was in line waiting to get out. We did have OPP involved, we also had a witness. So we were able to get ahold of the person that did cause the damage. And they did pay an invoice fee for what it would take to replace that gate and cost of labor and materials and whatnot. So I'm glad to hear that that was, that was solved. And we were able to get that done. Just some, you'll see larger numbers of complaints that have been coming in over the last couple of months, a lot, I would say, due to COVID and everybody being up on their properties and that. We still haven't had really anything for enforcing the Reopening Act or the new province's new opening program that's going on. Other than that, it's, it has been, we're doing, also, sorry, I should mention for health and safety, there, we are three classes in. We had a total of five classes scheduled to go. Two more classes will be, I believe, next week. And then. And then everybody should be all certified for first aid and CPR within our, our staff here at the office and, and the arenas and parks and wrecking and the roads department. If, if council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
A question for Robert.
If I'm out of line by asking this question or just let me know. I know that it's the time of year, especially the wonderful summer we're having. And all of us counselors, everyone of our wards, we're all on lakes. And we had an incident this past weekend on Eagle Lake and I'm trying to make it really short and sweet. And I had a few calls and emails and long conversations on the phone in the last few days. Where very large party on a Friday, Saturday night fireworks going off. Lot of language, three o'clock in the morning, out running around, see dudes at three, four in the morning. I, I, I know Rob, that you, you can't handle that at the time and you're going to hear from the people today. I told them to contact you. And I understand they should call the police, which they did. And they got some, the dispatch in Ottawa or something, but I guess they should dial nine one one. Is this what the people should do, Rob? If in these cases.
Dialing nine one one, I would say no. I wouldn't see this as an emergency. I definitely see it as a noise complaint or a firewall complaint. More so than always complaint than anything. I would dial their one eight hundred number, which can be found on their website, on the opp.ca website. That goes to a, the main dispatch center and then usually because they're calling from Halliburton area, they should, it should go directly to the central region OPP dispatch. Sometimes it, they may not, depending on what the staffing is, it may be rerouted. But anybody here in Dizart, if they are wishing to call OPP on the weekend, should call that one eight hundred, one triple eight number. And make sure that they tell them that they need central region dispatch and central region dispatch will will dispatch out the Halliburton Islands detachment. If you're in hardcore, they probably, they will call usually call the Bancroft because Bancroft OPP are a little bit closer than, than our, our detachment down here is.
Okay, I'll relay that message. One last part. They wanted me to maybe contact the, it wasn't a rental. It was proper, I guess it was the, the owners of the, of the building and maybe it's the younger part of the family were up partying. But I guess it was quite loud. And they want to know if I would talk to the property owners, which I don't mind doing. But I don't want to do anything that council doesn't want me to do in that. I'm not going to go there and look for an argument or just I'd just go there to look and know there. It was quite loud here. I don't know whether you're aware of it, but so I don't know how, how to handle that. I have to give them an answer whether I don't mind going to the people. Maybe this weekend, somebody's up there, just go knock on the door and have a nice little gentle conversation with them, but.
And that's where, and that's where I would start, Walt. I mean, when I receive, and I, I believe I spoke to your constituents, maybe about twenty minutes, half an hour ago about the issue. And, and I'd advise them of that, of the OPP situation. I've also advised them that I will try to go out and make contact with them first and, and see where it goes from there. If they are weekend and they only come up on the weekends, then I would process a letter notifying them of what I've received in regards to complaints. And, and hope that while upon receiving the letter that they'll contact me and we can have a chat about it. We are, we like to respond on, on, on an educational basis and educate them and, and give them the warning that, listen, we've had complaints, we need to tone this down and, and go from there. So in the past, I've had a couple situations like that where people, I've sent letters out to people and they have contacted me and I've had really good conversation with them and they were really perceptive and from what I can tell, apologetic to, to disrupting their neighbors and rights and properties and, and.
Do you think it's okay? Should I go and talk to them maybe on the weekend?
I, I would say that would be
Thank you. Thank you then.
It's good to have the communication if they want to reach out to their counselor, but in terms of any kind of enforcement or doing anything, Walt, it's not. First of all, they broke a whole lot of rules. They broke a noise by law. They broke a fire ban by law if they were doing that. So I'd kind of leave it in Robert's hands to enforce and want to go and have a chat, but it's.
I wouldn't go there looking for trouble.
No, I know. And so it's, I mean, I, I think you, you did the right thing. You told people how to contact Robert and then he can sort of take it from there.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so just a motion. I, pardon me? Go ahead.
All right, just to follow up on that. Robert, I recall a while ago, you shared a posting on LinkedIn, if I recall, with respect to a community that hired post-secondary students who were pursuing a career in law enforcement to, to work at summer by law enforcement. And, and I had shared that with, with the mayor and also with Tamara. But it, it leads one to ask, just use the Council McKechnie's example there, where we don't have any weekend coverage. You know, there are many young people that are interested in a career in law enforcement. And, and you know, as your article pointed out, this is a great training ground. And, and I wonder if, you know, it might be appropriate for council to, to suggest to staff, there'd be a little further investigation of that. Maybe something that we could consider as part of the budget for twenty twenty two is what would be the cost implications of having summer students do by law enforcement. You know, from May fifteenth to Labor Day or whatever. Great training for them and, and probably a badly needed service in our community. Because you know, it is a busy time and there are offenses that are occurring. And today people look and say, well, there's nothing that can happen. Just as Counselor McKechnie described and, you know, after the fact, it's a little sure, the owner will get some kind of a notice, but I'd sure support learning a little bit more about what that could do and what the cost would be. As, as I said, as part of preparing a budget for twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I'm going to let Tamara take that.
Yeah, it's currently through the personnel committee right now, we're working, well, I'm working with them to develop a report that outlines any future roles we think might be necessary in the next year or so for, as you say, to support budget and to get ahead of it. Because as we know, we're kind of sometimes get through budget and then go, oh, we can't survive another month with it. So we've got to move. So we're trying to get a little bit ahead of that, but that's one of those areas, as we've discussed before, that we'll certainly be looking at in more detail, along with other departmental needs as well, bringing that forward as a whole. To council.
Okay, I think that answered the question. So I will then again ask for a move or second to receive the report. Counselor Keckney, Counselor Clark. We result of the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the April and May by law department update, all in favor. Okay, that carries. And the parking fines and the parking app.
So as council directed from the, I guess would be the March committee of a whole meeting, I did look further into the parking fines and, and a parking app possibility for, for our municipality. We've laid out the, the table there. We are the lowest rate for, for any parking fine when it comes to either time parking or meter parking. I think it, it does need to rise. Pretty straightforward in a report when it comes to the parking fees. I've set a parking increase fine of maybe twelve for an early, the early payment for a user or fifteen for a, a set fine after that early payment is, is no longer accepted nor they pass that time period where the early payment can be paid. If there's any questions in that to the report, I'll be happy to, to answer.
Sure. Well, thanks for, it's a quite a detailed report. You did a lot of work on this. So I'm going to open up to the floor for questions and Counselor Clark gets first.
Yeah, Rob, very detailed and very much looks towards the way of the future with, you know, kind of the, you know, tap and pay and all that type of thing. There's still a lot of us out there with the old flip phones that have no intelligence at all. I'm just wondering, you know, to, to preclude people feeling like they're breaking the law when you haven't got anything to to use that kind of a tap and pacing. Perhaps signage that points people to where there is free parking within the community. I know if people come up towards, you know, the, the arena or even over towards where the boat launches, it's free, free parking as opposed to the, you know, the metered parking areas. So that's, that would be my only suggestion is that we kind of back up or put some options in so that if people aren't able to participate and they know where they can go and park and not, not be subject to a fine.
So the roads department, I've actually already done that. When you come into town from either Glurt or twenty one, just, just as you approach the Headlake Boat Launch area, there's actually a green sign on the hydro, hydro poles there on, on the, right on that side of the road, the lake side of the road. And it, it points municipal parking in there. The only thing it doesn't say is, it, it doesn't say that it's free parking. But it is free parking as there's no meters or anything in, in there, no permit required on that. Same with the same with even down Maple towards where Rotary Beach Park is as well. They have a sign. I know over here, just right outside the arena on, on the road, there's also a sign pointing in there. That's also like a green sort of symbol that points there.
Just for clarification, this is, this is an app that someone can instead of putting a tunny in the, we're still going to have the parking meters thing. Play. So a person doesn't need a phone. If you have a two dollar coin or a one dollar coin, you go and put that in, but you get a piece of paper, you put it in your thing. Say you don't have any coins, but you have your cell phone. You go doop, doop, doop and like it's your license plate. So then when Robert comes up to it, he goes, oh, look, that license plate has paid for parking until one fifty one or something like that. That's what it is. So there's still the option to put in.
Yeah, there's, there was no intention of removing the meters like, like Counselor Smith said, some, some of you with the, the old flip phone. Won't be able to access that kind of, of, of app on those phones. So you would still require the, the meter to make that payment. So we're, we're not taking the meters out. The meters are staying in. This would be an additional service that wouldn't help with those, with the people that would, don't want to touch the meters and, and, and because of the COVID pandemic. Gives them that other option of complying with paying for parking in the downtown court.
So then on the pay and display meters, we have to put the hotspot logo or whatever we go with. It's recommended that, that we, so they have that option too, right?
Correct. All three, all three providers there do have that with them that they would give us for each zone. So we would, we would apply the sticker on those paying displays. And even the signs that are above the paying displays can be altered and put that, there's the hotspot or the mobile or the McCain pay app that's available to pay for your parking as another option instead of going to just paying at the meter. So there will be the signage for it. I, I do plan on, on doing some social media and some radio and, and news. So everybody does, does get the updated information on, on what's going on and what we, what services we've added on a parking standpoint.
And the only, another question I had and then all like still other questions from other councillors, you, you, you do have under sort of financial impact. You have that, but it, I'm kind of adding up the pieces myself and I know it's just an estimate, but as opposed to here's the total. So like the hotspot, you know, there's a user pay, there isn't an annual fee. I just found it a little difficult in the report to gather what, what is this actually going to cost us a year? Like you've got a handheld device, you've got a printer that you're carrying around now and a shoulder strap for all of that. So what's the total annual cost would we estimate? And is it worth doing this? Because we don't have to, we're, we're two different things really we're looking for. One is increasing the parking fines and one is deciding whether we want to have this app.
So if, if we did, okay, so, so your examples with the hotspots, I'll continue with that on the hotspot. Hotspot in the report, like as stated in the report, it's, it's the only one out of the three that offers enforcement capabilities. In talking with, with Carl and myself, we feel like right now at the time, there wouldn't be that, that need for that kind of of enforcement capabilities. I, I don't think we're quite at that point for the municipality to go there. There would be, the startup cost would be a little bit more in the first year than it would be in the second year as, because we do have to buy that equipment. So we do have to buy the handheld device. We do have to buy the printer. And whatnot. So there would be that startup cost that would be a, a, a financial overhead for, for the, the, the first year and then the the other, the costs that you would see. The annual cost of fifteen thousand for enterprise is yearly would probably be after our first year. I'm still in talks with hotspot, getting more information with them. And with the enforcement light, which is not quite as, as detailed as, as the hospital, the hotspot enterprise, it would be eight thousands, eight thousand a year after that, after the year initial startup.
Yeah, I just don't want to spend so much on an app and all of the costs to go with it than we bring in in parking. Like, is it worth it? So anyway, questions from the floor? Other thoughts, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, well, I had the same concern. And I believe from your report, Robert, you're not proposing to buy the enforcement module. We're just going to offer the application to people who want to use it. And, and so you know, of whatever money is collected, two point nine nine percent of it goes to the service provider. And the service provider also charges the user, you know, for the service, the twenty cents per use, or they can go with the monthly or year, annual options. But our, our lost revenue, if you like, is two point nine nine percent. Or just the people who use this particular application pay for the parking. Counselor Clark, myself may never use it and therefore you just get our cash. And, and there's no impact on that. You are going to require a little bit of equipment to support this at your end, even without the enforcement. That's correct?
Correct.
And that equipment, that equipment adds up to a boat. I, I kind of eyeballed it around twelve hundred dollars, a one-time charge. Is that correct?
With the, just the app itself?
Yeah.
They would, they would give us the device free of charge.
Okay, so if we don't have the enforcement module, you don't require any money, Dizart.
Correct. They would, they would give us the handheld device to monitor, monitor that app free of charge.
Free of charge. So the only cost then is the lost revenue of two point nine nine percent.
For the transactions. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, at that level and I'd have no, in fact, I think it's a, it's a reasonable thing to do because we will get some additional revenue. People who, you know, haven't been paying will use this app and and it'll work to our advantage. So I'm, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking that question because that's where I was a little confused. There's a lot of detail in the report and I'm thinking they still has to have a handheld device, even if we aren't doing this other enforcement thing. So I'm thinking that it's, so you know, you think about it, though it's two dollars for two hours. Is someone going to download an app, have that on their phone? To charge themselves two dollars to, because you can't go past two hours. That's the whole point of the thing. It's only, so it's two dollars for two hours. I, I suppose I'm one of those people that I, I, I still use a little bit of cash. I I suppose I'm one of those people that I I I still use a little bit of cash for small, like a two dollar item, I would pay cash as opposed to using my any app. So do do we want to go? What let's separate because there are two recommendations in the in the report. So the one is about the implementation of the parking fine increase from twelve dollars, which is the early payment, and it's fifteen dollars a full payment. We didn't even talk about that yet, but we know that Robert and has been dealing with the BIA, they support that, and we haven't had a change in fee. Is everyone okay with that portion? Change in the parking, what, fine? So that's good. Is it even worth it getting the hotspot app for? Do you think someone for two dollars? That's Mara first, and I see John, but I'm going to hear from staff, Mary and Mallory, and then John. This is Counselor Smith.
I I think by law can tell us the most about workload, but I think there's a lot of people like me that get caught off guard with no cash on hand, like I never have cash, coin, anything. So I always use the credit card when I go out of town for parking for sure, and I use it at the medical center for parking. It doesn't cause no extra infrastructure for us because as Robert said, he gets the handheld reader from the company. So he can, they don't need any paper on their dash because he can just scan it and it tells them whether they're current or not. I think it actually probably saves him time from that end of not having to go back and look up anything and but I would think if if by law doesn't think it's too much extra work, it definitely provides a service level increase for the public.
Yep. Yep. Mallory?
I was just going to say that a lot of people my age and younger, mostly younger too, don't have cash on handle all the time. So I've heard a lot. I'll just run in and keep an eye on my car. But I think if they have the app, they might actually pay for it. It's not the intention not to pay. They literally just don't have change. So they run in and they kind of watch for for Rob and then run back out, but we might actually get people paying with something like this. So I just wanted to give that. I've I've heard that line a lot. I'll just run in and watch my car. So.
Well, it's very low in cost to us. Counselor Smith and then Rob? Robert?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just going to say the same thing like I used a credit card to pay parking of three dollars. I have charges on my credit card of one dollar sometimes because you don't have cash. And and so there's that convenience factor. And and so, okay, if this was going to cost us eight thousand dollars upfront, I'd say no way. But given that they're going to provide the terminal and our only cost is the two point nine nine percent of loss of revenue, revenue that we're probably not getting today anyway. So it's, you know, it's a, it's an increase. Ninety seven percent of whatever gets spent is probably an increase for us. And and so for that, I think it's worthwhile. I also think it sends a message about our community in terms of, you know, we're not on the leading edge, but we're we're adopting newer technologies and we're looking for better ways of serving the public. And and this is what this is. It's about improved customer service. And and, you know, at no real cost. So oh, to me, it's it makes a lot of sense and I'd be happy to support it.
Okay, Robert, did you want to add anything to that? I think there's support for this.
Yeah, it's just it just clicked on my mind now. I mean, I didn't add something into the report and it just click here now. Motorcycles, everybody who's riding a motorcycle, and I'm not trying to give them their excuses or 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 anything like that. They also have a hard time of of when they pay at the pain displaying meters and and putting and getting that piece of paper that comes out of the machine with their time on it. Securing it to the motorcycle. So I I think just again, adding more support towards the the parking with the app would definitely definitely help so help with the motorcyclists and 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 providing them with that other option of of paying and at the at the meters.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's give it a go. Sounds like there's support. So I'll need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Smith and second by Counselor Wood Roberts. When does this would become effective? How I'll read the resolution, but when when with this.
So we would have to update the schedule in the bylaw for the new fines and then send it off to the the mag office, which is the Ministry of Attorney General for approval on the the short form, the short form wording and fine.
Okay.
So the bylaw would by law schedule would have to be updated for that and and sent off to them. So it 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 prob- probably take about a month or so, I think, to to get the parking fines increased.
Okay.
But the hotspot app can I I would say probably do the same.
It was it was fine increase because we're not changing the rate of to actually park. Okay, very good. So it was moved by Counselor Smith and seconded by Counselor Wood Roberts. It resulted the committee of the whole receives a report regarding parking fines and the parking app. And further that the committee, the whole recommends to council that staff be directed to update the parking control bylaw in order to implement a parking fine increase of twelve dollars for an early payment and fifteen dollars for full payment and further that the committee, the whole recommends that council direct staff to begin using the hotspot app without the enforcement capability for metered parking space of payment in addition to the current payment methods. All in favor? Okay, and that carries. And there was one last thing, is there not?
Yep, there's my report on the AMP's bylaw. So in, I think it was two thousand and twelve, if my information is correct, the provincial government enacted the administrative monetary penalty system under under the municipal act. This is, it's it started to be used for parking enforcement to get these minor tickets out of the the provincial courts without taking out their time. So the course can attend to more serious matters and and alleviate the the stress on on the court system. And basically, I guess to to sum it up, we would bring any adjudication that comes with the with parking tickets in-house and and handle it in here with a screening officer and a hearing officer and the hearing officer being the 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 final person with the final say. Either amending the ticket or or certifying the ticket as as it would be. And we could, we could still go along with, I was looking it up as well. There's some information that we, I I I didn't include that I recently found. I think I put in there that there would be no access to early early payments. But I was incorrect with that information. In the in the AMP's Act, it doesn't say that you cannot have an early payment fee. In if we were to keep it the way we are under the provincial guidelines going under parking, going under the court system, we have to have a voluntary payment and we have to have a set fine. In the AMP's Act, it doesn't say anything about having the voluntary payment, but there's nothing saying that we can't impose early voluntary payment as and we keep it remaining the same. So I just wanted to add that in there to the report as well. If there's any questions to the report, I'll be happy to answer.
Hey, questions, comments? Not recommended. We just maintain the status quo is is what's in there. So I think we'll take your sack recommendation to do that. Do you have a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor McKechnie, Counselor Clark. Here is all that the pay the whole acknowledges report on the administrative monetary penalty system and further recommends to council that Dicard at all maintain the current process based on the low volume of tickets being disputed at this time. All in favor? Go, Carrie. Okay, thanks both you gentlemen for that.
Thank you.
So to fellow counselors, what I thought I would do is we've got finance and then we've got one bylaw in it under administration. And then we take a a short lunch break and then we'll go into closed after that. We do, Mallory, go ahead.
I'm just going to recommend that we go into clothes before lunch so we don't have to go live again and.
Okay, my iPad just decides to talk to me. Yes, sorry, I meant that so that we could we'll go into clothes, but so that the public know that the length of closed is due to the first part of closed is a recess, is a lunch break. But yeah, we'll do that. But just if people are getting a rumbly in the tummy. Need a food stay. So first part is you links and Tamara, that's under you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Wake up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's oh, sorry. That's just a report for information. Just that there was a a study that Barbara and I participated in with you links on sustainable procurement or social procurement. So I think we're hoping that maybe as we hire a new procurement person, then they'll maybe have some time to look at that, maybe with the other municipalities, if there's an interest.
I think there probably will be. I think it's come up at the county as well. So this is just to receive, excuse me, the report. So mover and a seconder. Counselor Smith and second by Counselor Clark. Here is all that the pay the whole receives the U-Links Trent University report on sustainable procurement for information purposes. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Counselor Donaldson, it's probably not your fault with like the internet, but there's about a two second leg, so I never see whether you're voting. And then I look back and your hand was up in the air. So I'll stay focused on the screen. Just have a wee leg there on your. Okay, Barbara, revenue and expenditure report?
Yes, good afternoon. So we have here the revenue and expenditure report at the end of April. Pretty typical for April. One major activity is obviously we're looking at our interim property taxation that had taken place. And so we're currently at just over five million dollars in property taxation. And we're also the spin off of the property taxation is you'll notice under the environment that it's sitting at a surplus at this point, but that will change. That budget there is reflecting fifty percent of the annual ERU charge that we also include as a user fee on the property taxation bill. And one other notable item is under recreation, our visitor center. We're pretty well wrapping up with that project there. So at this point in time, it's still within the budget. So I'd be happy to take any other questions on the report.
Questions for Barbara on this? Okay, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Barbara, a couple of aspects of the report that caught my eye and I wanted to check that we didn't have a an expected issue. First, on the administration expense. In two thousand and twenty one, our April year to date, we'd spent thirty seven point five percent of our budget. Same time last year, we only spent thirty two percent of our budget. And last year, we ended up the year at a hundred and eight percent of budget. So we ended up exceeding budget last year, even though we'd only spent thirty two percent April year to date. And as I said, this year, we're at thirty seven and a half percent April year to date. Is there is there a likely issue there in your mind? Terms of exceeding the total year budget?
Yeah, nothing that I can think of offhand. Again, I'd have to go back and do a deeper dive into the two thousand and twenty results to see perhaps there is a capital project that took place last year that we don't have this year.
Yeah, well, maybe it was it would have been later in the year though, because, you know, we're we're spending money quite a bit faster this year than we did last year.
Again, I'd have to go back and look at the specific details for two thousand and twenty.
The same concept occurs with our transportation and overhead April year to date. This year, we're at forty two point seven percent of budget. And last year, April year to date was only twenty seven percent of budget. Again, we ended the year over budget. So I just, you know, I like to feel comfortable that we're not looking at an overrun in terms of either one of those line items. Because they're both big tickets.
So again, that can be timing of projects. You know, if you're looking at a construction season, we heard earlier today that we we have a very good construction season this year and we were able to get a good start on that. Again, you would have to compare that back to two thousand and twenty to see what the environment was back then. However, overall, as of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one, these figures here are in line with the two thousand and twenty one annual budget. So sometimes projects are ahead, sometimes they're behind, but overall, the expenditures are within budget.
Okay, and you see no reason for concern on either one of these line items in terms of the total annual budget.
Yeah, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the funny thing with looking at a revenue and expenditure report. It's, you know, broad categories and it's not as if that's you know, why we want to go to tender, we get pretty much, you know, set prices on things. We we have we should come in on budget unless there's an anomaly. And that's when staff can tell us and then any department, oh, my gosh, we had a you know, whether it be transportation, we had snowstorm after snowstorm or something. And so transportation stuff, but generally speaking, it's hard because a lot of these things are project oriented. And it depends where we land in the year for that. So so anyway, we do have a resolution to receive which I will ask for from the floor, Counselor McKechnie and seconded by Counselor Wood Roberts. Here is all that the committee will acknowledge is receipt of the revenue and expenditure report at April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one. All in favor? And see there's Counselor Donaldson's hand. Carrie. About a one second leg. Check summary is there for your perusal. Again, this is something that sometimes some big checks go out to the county or education or something.
Yeah, so it's a pretty typical May. Total expenditures were just over one point four million, of which one point two was payments to vendors and the balance was payroll.
Okay, so mover and a seconder to receive, please. Counselor Clark and Counselor Wood Roberts. Result of the community, the whole acknowledges received the two thousand and twenty one zero five, so it's May check summary report. All in favor? Carrie? And the lease agreement with the chiropractic.
Yes, so Hill Chiropractic and Physiotherapy has been a long-term tenant at the Halliburton Medical Center. They've leased the space since August of two thousand and six. At that time, the lease agreement allowed for a ten-year lease with the option to renew for another five years. They did take that option to extend for another five years. So now they're looking for an additional extension on the lease agreement of another five years under the same terms and conditions of the agreement. I will note that the monthly lease amount is subject to annual CPI increase. The tenant does pay their proportionate share of heating and insurance costs. And they also provide property taxation for the unit that they're leasing. The annual lease income for this particular unit is just over twenty six thousand dollars per year.
Okay, so I can't believe they've been that well, the medical center's been built since two thousand and six. They've been excellent. That's for sure. Any questions or comments on the renewal of the lease agreement? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I I can't help but ask, why is this lease agreement so different than the one with of the other large tenant that we recently renewed that didn't have any increases in it?
So which tenant are you referring to? Which renewal? We've had a few of them lately.
Well, I was thinking of the Life Lab one. Where they, you know.
So they're also a tenant of the medical center and they also pay their proportionate share of heating and insurance costs. They also pay property taxation for the unit that they're leasing. And they generate the annual lease income for the medical center. So it is very similar.
Well, the the CPI increase is is not in the Life Lab ones that when you head forward, right? It's been a flat rate. It's been a flat rate for 15 years.
Yeah, so this particular lease here at the launch back in 2006, it was written into the agreement that it would be subject to an annual CPI increase.
It's a it's a better model with Life Labs and maybe with the next Life Lab renewal, we should move to making this a standard. So we don't end up collecting the same rent for 15 years running.
Okay. Duly noted. And I sort of thought the same thing. But anyway, this is just a good tenant and renews the lease till July 31st, 2026. So I do need to move her seconder for this. Councillor Wood Roberts and councillor McKechnie. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the Hill Chiropractic and Physiotherapy lease extension at the Halbert Medical Center for a five year lease period commencing August 1st, 2021 and ending July 31st, 2026. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. And this'll perk up some ears here. What are these properties eligible for tax sale?
Yes, so we're playing a little bit of catch up here in 2021. With COVID last year, we were not able to go through the property sale process. So we've completed the due diligence in terms of whether a property is eligible or for tax sale. And we have here seven properties that are contenders for tax sale. The first three are actually a catch up from 2020 and the last four properties are for 2021, the regular stream for tax sale. So we're looking at having our tax sale July the 8th. We will conduct the opening of the tenders by Zoom meeting. We'll have the meeting broadcasted from our council chambers. And so this is something very new. We've checked with the municipal clerk and we've also checked with the third party agency that does assist us with the tax sale process. So we feel that this would be viable to conduct the tax sale. Now, the other thing is, is part of the tax sale process, we have to advertise and you'll probably see this in the local papers starting this week. Advertisements run for four weeks and also we will be posting the bio of each property on our website. So any prospective parties that are interested in making a bid on the property can download that information from our website. Hard copies will be provided on a request only basis. So and it would be curbside pickup.
I think that's going to be pretty busy. Is there time for four weeks notice? Today's only June 8th to to meet, obviously gone through this, but I'm just going to ask it out loud to to the July 8th deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is week one.
Okay. When you say they're on a website, and then councillor Smith, I'll just finish my point. When you say they're on our website, people can't follow by the roll numbers unless they look at the roll book. If there are going to be a map indicator as well.
Yes, so there there will be a map that's been generated from our GIS system and it will each property will have a bit of a bio. Some of the common information would be property classification through impact their property classification. The assessment amount, the annual property taxes. So there is a little bit of information there. It is up to the prospective bidder to do their own homework as well.
Okay, councillor Smith had his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Last part of the question, Barbara, you didn't mention when you said some of the additional information, given that people can't go in and look at the assessment books, will you be providing the 911 address where that exists?
Um, I can go back and take a look at the actual property. Not all properties have a 911 number. Some it depends on the property type. If it's a vacant piece of property, no development. It's just the location, which is included in this report here. And it's also included on the bio sheet for each roll number.
All right, so people build a figure out where it is. This report here, you can actually tell unless you went to look at our testicles, right?
That that was my question. Councillor Smith, so there's going to be a full bio on each property with the zoning. You know, if it's waterfront residential or if it's something, something, or maybe one of them is, I'm thinking. But as well as that that key map, like what we see, what we get when we're doing planning agenda items, so there'll be a key map so people will be able to see. So there'll be a lot of information on each property on the website. And then if they require more information as requested, they can receive a hard copy of purpose.
And just one other aspect of this, so Barbara, you can do this just based on this report coming to committee. It hasn't actually come to council until two weeks from now. So does it need to go to council?
Information only. Basically, we're legislated by the municipal act on how we conduct the process. So nothing new. We've conducted many property tax sales and they're all governed by the municipal act.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good point. It's not something we approve or disapprove Barbara has. So councillor Donaldson, your turn.
I just wanted a quick question as to when these properties will be on our website.
They should be as of today. We've coordinated that with the actual advertisement in both the local papers.
And when people submit a bid, and are they able to submit everything online? What's the percentage of, so for instance, if they bid $100,000 on something, what's the percentage of a whatever you call a deposit that they have to submit with their?
Yeah, there's a prescribed percentage. I don't recall offhand. However, there is a certain, there is a form that needs to be filled out with the bid and that lays out how much they need to provide as a secured deposit at the time of the bid. And so what we'll do at the municipal office, obviously, our doors are closed. We're going to make sure there's adequate signage on our front door at our drop box to the left of the public entrance. And bids can be dropped off there and we will monitor that drop slot up to 3:00 PM on July the 8th.
Okay. Um, any further questions on how a tax sale process works? It should be pretty slick. I mean, just because we're in COVID, it doesn't really matter. We're able to do everything electronically anyway. And if someone isn't able to, they can pick up the phone. Is there notification on the actual pieces of property itself? So wherever roll number is, bring, you know, 4624, year 01 kind of thing. Do we have to put notification for the sale anywhere on the physical property?
There's nothing that says we have to do that, but you know, our our goal is to try and settle the outstanding taxes before a tax sale. So as a courtesy, the municipality, if there is a structure on the property, we usually put a little letter together and have the bylaw officer physically attach it to the building. Just in case, you know, people come up on their on the weekend and, you know, they see this notice or it could be during the week too, just to alert them that the property is subject to tax sale. But prior to getting to this stage, there there's quite a lengthy process in notices that do go out to the registered owners on the property tax file.
And and I think there was another question, but lastly, I'll just ask. If any one of these seven property owners pays their taxes balance in full penalty interest, the taxes, the tax sale doesn't go through.
That's correct.
I'm right up until July 8th. Even if somebody might bid, for instance, there's three lots here that are that are if they're assessed at that, that's they're pretty substantial pieces of property. So someone may just they they still the opportunity, the owner still has the opportunity to pay those taxes in full. And the tax sale ends.
Right. So what happens is the property owner, they they actually can make a payment up to the point of the municipality registering transfer of ownership to the the successful bidder of the property. So there is a little bit of leverage from that actual tax sale date being July 8th up to the point of the municipality transferring the ownership on that property. Which is, it's not a very big window. Usually we try and wrap this up within seven to 14 business days after the actual tax sale.
Okay, councillor Donaldson?
I just have a quick question for Barbara. I do remember this being discussed before, but I just want to reconfirm. So if the the sale, let's just just pick anyone is like, there's one here for 196 and it's owed 41. The difference being because it could easily go for 100,000. The difference goes to the previous owner? So I know that it was discussed. I just can't remember exactly.
Yeah. So what happens is any proceeds above the minimum tender requirement. They actually, the municipality has to forward that money to the to the courts and that's called a payment into court. And so the previous owner of the property does have the opportunity to make an application to the court to actually retrieve that excess money. Now, I think it's going back to 2019 was the last year where if within a 12 month period, the previous owner did not make an application into court to retrieve those surplus proceeds on the tax sale. Then the municipality could make an application to the record and retrieve that money. But that's been disbanded since I believe it is 2019. So any surplus funds stay with the courts?
So we get the tax money. That's it. So don't look at the comp that says with the assessments worth, we used to get that years ago. So you'd be like, oh, look, somebody paid their taxes and you just yeah, we're not, this isn't a windfall for us, except it is. It is ideally of 62,000 dollars for of that, but that's that's about the most. Is that correct, Barbara?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know, don't get too excited. Okay, so good information on that. And I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of interest. And we'll, if we get contacted, we'll tell people who go to the website. Okay, so move her in a second or to receive the report. And councillor Smith and councillor Clark. He resolved that the committee, the whole receives this report regarding the properties eligible for tax sale in 2021 as information. All in favor? Okay, Carrie's. And then that's everything under finance and then just administration, we have the cemetery bylaw.
Yes, so this is just a quick report to let everyone know that our maintenance bylaw and our fees and charges by law for our cemetery has been approved by the Bredman Authority of Ontario. So they came into effect June 1st. And we actually, council approved it on April 27th, but obviously it had to go to that extra step. So this is just letting everyone know that everything went through smoothly and it's now approved.
Okay, excellent. So move your seconder for that. Councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Smith. We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the update regarding Bredman Authority of Ontario approval of the Evergreen Cemetery Maintenance Bylaw 2021-34 and fee charges by law 2021-35. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. So as stated at the beginning of this session, I were going to move to go into closed. And then when we go into closed, we're going to take a 30 minute lunch break. So that'll bring us back to our computers at 1:30. But first, we will have the motion to go into closed. So if I could have that, please, from councillor McKechnie and councillor Wood Roberts. We have resolved that the committee, the whole adjourned its regular meeting at 1:00 PM to discuss matters pursuant to section 239-2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended pertaining to a pending disposition of land in the township of Guilford, Bitter Lake Road. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local board under Public Works. And a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could be reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization. Public Works. All in favor? Okay, so we are now in closed. You can turn your cameras off and we'll see you back at 1:30. Okay, so we are now in closed. You can turn your cameras off, and we'll see you back at 1:30.
...